Everyone, we will go ahead and get started. A copy of the Open Meetings Act is located on the table outside as well as on our website. There is also an automatic defibrillator on the back wall of the legislative chambers. Please stand for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the law of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
This morning, we'll begin with our agenda for the Douglas County Board of Equalization. Row call, please.
Commissioner Boyle. Commissioner Kavanaugh is absent at the moment. Commissioner Friend. Commissioner Garcia. Commissioner Morgan. Commissioner Rogers is absent at the moment. Commissioner, Madam Chair.
Present. Item A, approval of the minutes of the Board of Equalization meeting held Tuesday, August 1st, 2023, and Item B, call for a meeting and set August 22nd, 2023, as a date for hearing on certified assessment corrections reflecting the admission, addition of omitted property to tax roll or increased value on property. Is there a motion to approve A and B? Motion by Commissioner Morgan, second by Commissioner Boyle. Any questions or comments? Please vote.
Commissioner Rogers, Commissioner Kavanaugh are present. Motion passes seven to zero.
Next is citizen comments. Is there anyone here or on Zoom wishing to speak to the Board of Equalization about an item not on the agenda?
Good morning.
Good morning.
Gray Store, 501-5 Lafayette Avenue, Omaha, 68132. Doing my homework last night, I noticed that the Board has decided to dismiss my protest of property tax valuations. So I'm here before the Board today to ask for special point of privilege, whatever it is, under rules of Robert Schruggles or parliamentary law, to be appointed a, or get an application to become a 501(c)(3) or a community partner. People that get to come up here and ask for funds from the Board to help us survive and replace physical plant, whether it be for just budgetary things or out of ARPA. It seems like ARPA is just about game for anything. So I can't probably stay in Omaha unless, without ARPA funds, TIF funds, or your funds as a 501(c)(3), because without those, it probably won't happen. So that justifies my asking for a handout from the Board. Thank you.
Anyone else wishing to speak to the Board of Equalization about an item not on the agenda? See, Dan?
Well, Dan Ash Douglas County Clerk, I guess it is about Item D, but I just want to thank some people. I can wait if you want, or just go.
Yeah, I'll do that one next.
Okay.
You might as well stay there, because it's next. Next are the resolutions. The first resolution is Item D, set the 2023 real property valuations for real property protests that were reviewed by the Douglas County Board of Equalization and its referees. And before we begin with those, Dan, go ahead.
All right. Thank you, Dan Ash Douglas County Clerk. Think I definitely speak for Catherine on this one, too. Catherine Hall. We just wanted to thank the staff and the referees. It was a very busy year. Our second highest year of protests since 1995, so a lot of moving parts. And I think the team did pretty well. I mean, I'm sure with 7,300 some. I'm sure there's some folks out there who disagree with me, but overall, for the most part, I thought they handled the workload and call volume very well. And the refs, you know, we go to them a lot, and they were always very accommodating. So I definitely appreciate them. And the assessor's office as well. It's interesting, when I talk to other county clerks, it's a wide range. Some counties, the assessor is, hey, this is your deal. You figure it out. Other counties, it's a very adversarial, I mean, with a capital A, relationship between the refs and the assessor's office. And I feel like we have a pretty, I mean, I felt this way under Roger, under Diane, and now under Walt as well. I mean, they pretty much are, you know, their attitude's been, we're here if you need us, and they always provide us the property record file, which is, I mean, they're not required to do that. So they definitely are here to assist, and they really don't get involved unless they really feel strongly that they maybe wanted to change a value that they originally brought forward. So anyway, I just wanted to thank everybody for all their hard work this year. And even last thing, sorry, I definitely don't have any residents in mind, but there were certainly plenty of residents who were very gracious and patient with us as well when we were trying to get things figured out for them. So, thank you.
Thank you. With that, Commissioner Kavanaugh?
Thank you. I'd like to commend Dan Ash and his staff, BOE, and the people at the Assessor's Registered Deeds, all the referees and staff that did a great job. And I particularly want to point out the very helpful website that Dan put up and updated as the process went on, that even someone as inept at electronic media as me could get into and find information on. And I think that's a big part of what we see in Dan Ash's office and the service that he provides to the people, is how open and helpful it is to regular folks just trying to do business. So kudos to you, Dan, and to the folks with you, and to the Assessor's Registered Deeds office. And I want to commend all the people who took advantage of their right to protest their property valuations and came in and participated in this process. This is, you know, your government in action, and hopefully we'll come out with some type of a result here that may not be perfect, but for now, the best we can do, and we're always trying to improve it. And Dan, you took a big step up this year with the interactive information that you posted that we could utilize. So thank you for that.
So we will move on to Item D, which is setting the 2023 real property valuations for real property protests. Is there a motion to approve? Motion by Commissioner Rogers, second by Commissioner Boyle. Is there anyone in the chamber or on Zoom wishing to speak? And just to remind everyone, your presentation will get five minutes to present your case to the Board of Equalization.
I don't think it would take me that long.
Okay.
Howard Hahn, QTAC Rock, 1650 Farnham, Omaha. Okay, better? I represent 144 MLB LLC, and we take exception to the value that was set by the assessor and then by the referee. The value that was put down was $11,808 for improvements only at 2727 South 144. The, this property was acquired on December 9th, I believe, 19, I'm sorry, 2022, and it was acquired for $7,950,000. The property, as part of the diligence process, the property was appraised in October of 2022 at $8,025,000. And then my point is, it was an arms-length purchase from a company called the Graham Group that had owned it since 1996, and I don't know how to set the value any better than the value set by the free market. In this case, as my memo that I gave you states, Clarkson Regional Health Services, which is the old Clarkson Hospital, owns the underlying ground and leased it to the Graham Group in 96. There was a right of first refusal in that lease, and a third party, I'll tell you, I didn't put it in the memo, but it was the orthopedic hospital came to Graham and wanted to buy the building, and instead Clarkson exercised its right of first refusal. I think I've probably said enough, and if there's, if anybody has questions, I'm happy to answer them.
What are you asking for, Mr. Hahn?
Well, $7,950,000, for the improvements only, not for the land.
Okay.
And, yes.
Okay, thank you. Commissioner Kavanaugh?
Thank you. Mr. Hahn, did you have a hearing in front of a referee on this matter?
Yes, sir.
And did you represent the property at that hearing?
Yes.
And what was it?
The outcome was that it was unchanged from the assessor's value.
Right, we see the outcome, but what information did you offer?
We offered the same information in depth, as is mentioned in my memo, plus the referee on second go-around requested some information about the land value, as that went to the issue of the, what the land, of the land lease value. And so, well, we supplied that information to the referee.
So the valuation, if I read this correctly, is recommended at $11,814,500.
Yes, sir.
And your request is to reduce that valuation to what?
7.95. In other words, Commissioner Kavanaugh, the purchase price of the improvements in a fair market value transaction.
Right, I heard that. Is there somebody from the Board of Equalization referees that could speak to this for a second so that we can get some kind of a holistic view? I think that we're going to have to do this on each and every one of these so we can get both sides.
Chris Musto, Coordinator, 1011 South 78th Street.
Sorry, Commissioners, I'm just going to pull up the comments that were submitted by the referees for this one. Yeah.
So this is, I guess, a Clarkson Hospital property? Is that, am I reading that right? Clarkson Regional Health Services?
Which is the incarnation.
Could you go to the microphone, please?
Which is the current incarnation of the old Clarkson Hospital.
Okay. We're both showing our age by going back to the Clarkson Hospital.
Okay, with regards to protest 22-23-00615, protester provided an appraisal that had large adjustment for land allocation, about one-third of overall value. Site size for the land allocation was reportedly from the ground lease. Land sales used for establishing the land value are not valid for comparison. Sale one is much smaller, corner pad site sold to a gas station. The price paid is much higher than most suburban sales. Sale two shows price, $2,400,000 taken from CoStar. That's because it was a package sale with property adjacent to the north, so the allocation is not necessarily reflective of the subject property. The actual price shown for this property is $144,000 or $1.57 per square foot. Sale three is at the corner of 120th and L, so superior for commercial purposes. Notably, subject is 5.59 acres. The sales shown range from 2.3 acres up to, range up to 2.3 acres, and the two have strong retail locations. These sales are not valid for comparison to the subject. Protester provided cash flow, flow of statements for the property, and I found marketing brochure for space for lease. The brochure was asking $22 per square foot to $32 per square foot for triple net. At the lower end, using 8% capitalization rate suggests value for the entire property at $22,315,976. Based on these figures, the recent sale of the property does not seem indicative of the property's full potential value. In conclusion, the appraisal has insufficient support for its land adjustment, and while the sale may be between willing parties, the recent sale does not appear reasonable based on the property's physical and economic characteristics, and does not seem to encapsulate what other willing buyers may reasonably pay for such a property. And then the recommendation was to recommend to maintain the assessed value.
Thank you for that cogent report.
Time.
Thank you.
Commissioner Morgan?
Mr. Hahn, it looks as though the people purchasing this property, the organization, got an appraisal before they purchased the property, kind of looking at that to help them with the value.
As a diligence matter, yes.
So they had an appraisal earlier and then purchased the property in December of '22?
Correct.
For the 7.9 million?
Correct.
And I don't know, I wouldn't use comps on that, but I assume was the property listed or it's an arms-length transaction, I assume?
No, as I indicated, the, that would be my wife. Sorry. The, it's probably what she thinks about me as a duck. The, no, the property was purchased pursuant, okay, the orthopedic hospital came to Graham and wanted to buy the building, and Clarkson exercised its right of first refusal under the land lease to acquire the building. But the price had been set by the orthopedic hospital coming to Graham, and then Clarkson purchased it.
Okay. Any other? No. Okay, no other questions or comments? What is the will of the Board?
Thank you very much.
Thank you. Commissioner Kavanaugh?
To do the, amend that motion to reflect that we support the findings of the Board of Equalization and the referee's recommendation.
If I may, Madam Chair, Commissioner Kavanaugh, for clarification, I mean, that's, you probably really don't need to make that mo, because the motion?
The motion that was on failed for lack of a second, and your motion actually is put, is already in Item D.
I see, okay.
So we don't need a separate for that one?
Okay.
Okay. No other questions or comments? Anyone else wishing to speak during Item D?
Madam Chair, I did submit a list of about eight properties that, if we could just, the motion could include that as well, I'd appreciate it. Basically, these are what the referees intended to put forward originally. We just caught them after 9:00 AM yesterday.
Okay. And those are in the book as well?
Correct, yep. Single page.
Okay. So the motion, if it's okay with the maker, is to include those eight properties that were placed in the book this morning? Is that okay with the Secretary? Okay? All right, no other questions or comments? Please, Commissioner Kavanaugh?
So this is a vote on everything in the book?
Yes. Yes. Okay, please vote.
One moment, please.
Oh, did you? No, it's for the whole thing. Do you have a comment? Commissioner Kavanaugh?
I gotta pause the vote, sorry. Otherwise, the mics won't work. Okay, your mics should be able to work now, Commissioner. No? All right, I gotta stop the vote then, so.
So it's Item D?
All right, can you try, can you get your mic on now? Now, there you go. Now it should work.
So I believe you indicated, Mr. Clerk, there were somewhere around 7,400 protests filed, and of those, a subset contained in this Board of Equalization book were appealed to the Board of Equalization, and subset of that were actually heard by live referees in hearings there. And they made recommendations, which are subject to this motion, to endorse those recommendations. Some of those recommendations were to change the valuation, some of those recommendations were to maintain the valuation as recommended by the assessor's office. And so we are now going to vote on all of those together at one time. It's kind of important that people understand that this is not a perfect process. Obviously, we have thousands and thousands of properties here that we're going to vote on in a minute that nobody on this board really has that much familiarity with. And so our reliance is on the process that's in place, which is the expertise of the assessor's office, which is significant, and that of the Board of Equalization and the referees, which, as you just heard, is very significant and detailed, and they possess knowledge that we, as laypeople, by and large, with the exception of my colleague, Mr. Morgan, don't have. So that's what we are dealing with today. And we always comment on this every year, that it's not a perfect process and we should fix it, and hopefully, going forward, we can make it better. But just so that you understand, the process is today that we will vote on these properties en masse and go forward, and that's what we are about to do. So I'm just saying this so that people watching can understand what exactly we're doing, and hopefully, going forward, we can improve on this. We're always trying to do our best. Thank you.
Commissioner Boyle?
And I appreciate exactly what Commissioner Kavanaugh just said and 100% agree. I also want to make it clear that this is the opportunity for citizens to speak out about their individual protests. I'm not sure if that's clear, just the way this process is done. So that's both in the chambers here as well as online. I just want to make sure people know they do have the opportunity to speak. At the same time, as Commissioner Kavanaugh alluded to, we do heavily rely on the recommendations from those referees. And so they are experts to me, and I really do have to rely on them since they, they're the ones trained in the field. Third, I want to make a point that we all agree that this, this system is clearly broken. There's, there's, it does not appear, it doesn't feel to be very equitable, and we're working with the county assessor. The county assessor is working with the state to help modify this process, because as you've all heard from this board before, is a lot of these valuations are set forth from state statute. So we're working on it. We're trying to make it better. I mean, all of us have had tax increases, too. We're taxpayers. We're not fond of what our, I mean, we would protest if it didn't look funny. So the bottom line is, we're working on this, and we understand the frustration. At the same time, we're, I feel like we're kind of bound by law and also by state law and also really relying on the expertise of those referees. So I'm just here to say personally, and as a Commissioner, I apologize for this process. I mean, this is just, I feel no sense of fairness in this, but we are going to be working hard to try to improve this in the future. So, so thank you for your understanding, but again, this is your opportunity to speak if you, if you choose to do so.
No other lights? With that, there is a motion and a second on the floor. Dan, please vote.
Motion passes. Commissioner Morgan abstaining. All other Commissioners voting yes.
Also, could have a conflict for some of the people that I, not necessarily in my district, that I protested their taxes for, and feel that it's appropriate to abstain.
Okay, thank you. We'll move to Item E, review and approval of the 2023 valuations for real properties that submitted reports of destroyed real property. Is there a motion to approve? Motion by Commissioner Rogers, second by Commissioner Boyle. Any questions or comments? Please vote.
Give me one moment, Commissioners. All right, thank you. Commissioner Kavanaugh, Commissioners Kavanaugh and Friend. Motion passes seven to zero.
Next, we'll move to Item F, request for the Board to approve the treasurer's recommendation to deny an Application Form 453 for vehicle tax exempt status. The vehicle is not titled in the name, nor did the, in the veteran's name, nor did the veteran provide the required certification from the VA stating that he meets the criteria for the exemption. Is there a motion on Item F? Motion by Commissioner Rogers, second by Commissioner Morgan. Any questions or comments? Please vote.
I apologize, Commissioners, I keep making these updates. All right, okay, thank you. Motion passes seven to zero. Motion passes seven to zero.
Our last resolution is Resolution G, approving the applications for tax exemption, Form 457 on motor vehicles recommended for approval by the county treasurer, is there a motion to approve? Motion by Commissioner Morgan, second by Commissioner Rogers, is there any questions or comments? Please vote.
Motion passes seven to zero.
We have one protest, an appeal of rejection of homestead exemption for Beulah Pope of 2909 North 25th Street in Omaha, 68111. Good morning, Mr. Goodwilly.
Good morning, Commissioners, Mike Goodwilly, Douglas County Assessor, Register of Deeds Office. The backstory here is that Ms. Pope owned this property for a long time, she had a homestead exemption in 2020 as the owner occupant, and then in late August of 2020, she transferred the property in its entirety to her son. She did not retain an interest as a joint tenant, or a tenant in common, or even a life estate, she just transferred it in its entirety to her son, so she no longer owned the property. That was the case until June 28th of this year, when she was added to the property as a joint tenant, so now she has an ownership interest. Unfortunately, state law requires two things of homestead in terms of ownership. First, you've got to own the property prior to January 1 of the year for which you apply, and you have to own and occupy the property from January 1 through August 15 of that year. Ms. Pope required ownership at the end of June, but she didn't really meet the ownership requirements, and so we sent out the sort of mandatory denial on this, because those requirements are, are a shell in the statute, they're mandatory. I have read the appeal letter from Ms. Pope, it is hard not to be moved by that, and so I guess our position is, we think the statute is quite clear about the ownership. On the other hand, if the commissioners were to grant this homestead, we certainly are not going to take it down to Lincoln on appeal. Thank you.
Ms., would you like to make an introductory comment?
My name is Jewel Rogers, I'm here with Karina Vaughn, who, we are both helping to care for Ms. Pope, since her son has been incarcerated. We are really just asking that the commissioners kind of approve what we've asked for here in a homestead exemption for Ms. Pope. As you know and as you've heard, she's lived here for quite some time, 50 years, and we, this is also a learning curve, I think it's important to recognize the situation, recognize that perhaps Ms. Pope did not necessarily have the appropriate knowledge of maybe how to move on into the next phase of whatever life looks like. And so that does mean that maybe the ownership structure wasn't what it needed to be, but that wasn't out of neglect or anything like that, it was truly just a not understanding. And the reason that I've been asked to help with the family is because I am preliminarily learning about the real estate field, and so I've been able to help, and that is why you saw that transfer in ownership, is because I began to ask questions and try to understand how we could best prepare Ms. Pope for moving on, and how to keep her safe now while she's in her home aging in place. So, I don't, if you have anything else to say, but that's what we're here to do, is just to ask that you all please approve the homestead exemption for Ms. Pope, just really understanding the situation in light of what the state law does say.
Thank you. Did you have anything?
Well, the only thing I would like to add is just, again, as what she said, pretty much, this is a learning situation, I just asked to step in last minute, because her son, who recently was incarcerated, she has no one here to help besides me and my cousin and my mother and my sister, we're there every day of the week to help her out with everything that she needs. And in this time, I've gotten to learn the history of the home, and this home means so much to her, and so I'm doing everything in my power to possibly keep her there until her end of days, which could be next month, it could be in five years, we're really not sure, her health is diminishing, but just doing everything in our power to try to keep her at this home. And at the time, her son was able to financially help and physically help, but he is not in that situation anymore and will not be probably before the end of her life comes, and so, again, we're just doing everything and we're hoping that you do approve this, since it was just denied only because her home was not added to the deed by the first of the year.
Could you state your name?
My name is Karina Vaughn.
Okay, thank you. All right, thank you. We do.
Thank Mr. Goodwilly for his comments.
If, if I may, commissioners, I would add, we do run into this once in a while, where somebody who is in homestead and qualifies it, already qualifies, takes the advice of some relative, often a child, and they make some move regarding the ownership of their property, or they move some money around with a retirement account and it turns into income, and they end up disqualifying themselves, so we're not all empathetic with Ms. Pope's situation.
There is a motion, is there a second? We do have a couple of comments, Commissioner Kavanaugh?
Reviewing the, the letter from, this is Pope here, she refers to Karina Vaughn, is that you as her caregiver? This 89-year-old woman is in, I guess you'd say, delicate health?
Yes.
And has been in this home for many, many, many years, is that right?
Say that again.
And she lives alone and you?
Yes.
Come in and help her daily?
Yeah.
You know, every once in a while, it comes around to us to do what I guess you would describe as equitable relief, equity seeks to do that which should be done, it's just the right thing. And Mrs. Pope here, in this letter makes a compelling case, that she was trying to do the right thing by transferring to her son, and it didn't work out, and it was a brief period, and it's been rectified, but trying to do the right thing, we should not sit here and penalize her. And so I think that you make a great case for giving equitable relief, and I for one am gonna support that, because I think when we get the opportunity to do the right thing, we should seize that opportunity, because it doesn't come around every five minutes. So thank you for bringing this to our attention, and thank you for providing the home health care that this woman needs, and I, I'm certainly looking forward to, hopefully, my colleagues joining and supporting this, and just kind of rectifying the situation so that she continues to live in her home undisturbed and enjoy this exemption from property taxes, I believe is probably very well earned on her part. So thanks for bringing this up.
Thank you. Commissioner Friend?
Yeah, thank you, Madam Chair, and I seconded Commissioner Morgan's motion because I wanted to say thanks to Mr. Goodwilly for, for pointing out that this decision would not necessarily be rejected or challenged, even though it violates not just the spirit of the law, but actually violates a functional law. We do have a modicum of authority on this board, and that's why an item like this is on our agenda, and I think if we do have that modicum of authority, based on the circumstances, I, I agree, I think we can, I think this was an oversight, and, and it happens, but now it's in front of us and I think we can rectify it. So, thank you all for the information. Thank you, Madam Chair.
I too would just like to thank both of you for being here on behalf of Ms. Pope. It's too often that our older Americans don't have those who will advocate for them and take care of them, and the caregivers themselves aren't appreciated as much as they should be, and so I appreciate you being here on her behalf. With that, we do have a motion and a second, please vote.
Madam Chair, does that include adjournment?
Uh, yes, it could.
Okay, give me one moment here. Okay, and just to reiterate, this motion is to approve the exemption and adjourn the meeting, the Board of Equalization meeting.
Yep.
And, here we go, thank you. Motion passes seven to zero.
Thank you for being here.
Thank you.
Next, we will move into our agenda for the Douglas County Board of Commissioners, roll call, please.
Commissioner Boyle, Commissioner Kavanaugh, Commissioner Friend, Commissioner Garcia, Commissioner Morgan, Commissioner Rogers, Madam Chair.
Present. Item A, approval of the minutes of the Board of Commissioners meeting held Tuesday, August 1, 2023, and item B, approval of claims submitted for payment process through Tuesday, August 15, 2023. Is there a motion to approve A and B? Motion by Commissioner Rogers, seconded by Commissioner Morgan, please vote. Next, we will move to the consent agenda, and we do have an item of emergency nature that needs to be added. It is a, setting a public hearing date of Tuesday, August 22 at 9:00 AM for addition to premise license and bottles and barrels, LLC DBA Bottles and Barrels at 5331 South 200 and 4th Ave, Suite 101, Omaha 68022. So could I get a motion to add this item to our consent agenda? Oh, that's a good question. I need to declare it an emergency first, and then add it to the agenda.
I move to declare the emergency to add the proposed item.
Is there a second? Motion by Commissioner Rogers, seconded by Commissioner Morgan to declare the emergency item, please vote.
Commissioners, I'm just gonna do a voice vote on this.
Okay, that's fine.
Commissioner Boyle, Commissioner Kavanaugh, Commissioner Friend, Commissioner Garcia, Commissioner Morgan, Commissioner Rogers, Madam Chair.
Yes.
Motion passes seven to zero.
Now, we'll go back to the motion to add it to the consent agenda, and that was made by Commissioner Morgan and seconded by Commissioner Rogers, or Friend, sorry. Please vote, you're gonna do a voice.
Yeah, Commissioner Boyle, Commissioner Kavanaugh, Commissioner Friend, Commissioner Garcia, Commissioner Morgan, Commissioner Rogers, Madam Chair.
Yes.
Motion passes seven to zero.
And now we have the consent agenda items A through M with the addition of the emergency item, is there a motion to approve? Motion by Commissioner Rogers, seconded by Commissioner Friend, any questions or comments? Please vote.
And this one, we will do a machine vote on this one. Commissioners Kavanaugh and Garcia. Motion passes seven to zero.
Next, we will move to citizen comments, is there anyone in the chamber or on Zoom wishing to speak to the Board of Commissioners about an item not on the agenda? I said, oh, recognition, sorry, wait a minute, Larry, I gotta back up for a minute, hang on a minute, Larry, I have to back up for a minute. We have a recognition and a proclamation of the recognition of the following county employee retired, Belicia Secret, worked for the Douglas County Health Center for 29 years, I don't believe she is here with us today, but the board, on behalf of the board, we do wish her happy retirement and thank her for her work for the Douglas County Health Center and dedication to the citizens of Douglas County. Is there a motion to approve? Motion by Commissioner Rogers, seconded by Commissioner Boyle, please vote. Citizen comments, is there anyone in the chamber or on Zoom wishing to speak to the board about an item not on the agenda?
Larry Shore, 5015 Lafayette Avenue, Omaha 68132. Firstly, I'd like to say a little difficulty hearing you today, even down close, I can hear, your voice is coming from that way, but can't quite understand your words when you don't speak at the microphone, it's either the equipment or the operator, I don't know which. All right. Recent weeks, there were some violations, I believe, of rules of order and probably the Open Meetings Act. I've been watching some other Board of Commissioners meetings around the state, and first of all, I don't think, like in Lancaster County, that it's legal to have to sign in every week at orders, say, participate in citizen's comments. We don't usually have to do that here unless you expect a large crowd. Okay, recently, we had a little professor, so to speak, that interrupted the meeting for a point of privilege or whatever, he wanted to call it, and then he, last time he was here, I think he admitted that he instructed you people on rules of order, point of privileges, and that he's willing to come down and teach you more about it, and that he went down to the state and taught the state senators. I question the truthfulness of that, but I'd like to point out that what he didn't tell you is that in this set of parliamentary rule, or Roberts rules, whatever you want to call it, it doesn't say that a member of the public can stand up and interrupt you, it says the members can stand up and call for a point of privilege. Not him, not Mr. Jimenez sitting there, that he brought his friend in to do that, but he did that personally two weeks ago, okay? He was allowed to interrupt a meeting. I stood up to point of privilege to his point of privilege, I was denied. That's treating other people differently, Mary Ann, and it was wrong, it was not legal in the first place. So I'll give you new copies of that, per Board effect, how to request points, rules of order. Now you guys say you have your own rules, but you also can use parliamentary rules when it does not conflict with Roberts rules. You need to make up your mind what rules you're gonna use. Open Meetings Act recalls, some of them reasonable rules, well, some of those rules are not reasonable, but these are some definitions in here for you, and they do talk about privilege. The other points are, quickly, things that I'm submitting to you for the record. The first one is regarding government of, by, and for the people, we the people. The next one is President Trump is probably vindicated, some recent news coming out, probably today, in regards to the elections that you people deny talking about. You know, your other counties are talking about it, and they're allowing citizens 15 and 20 at a time come up and talk about it. Yeah, they don't answer them either, or they don't ask them questions, which you're allowed, you can if you want, but they are, and I'm rather embarrassed that our county doesn't seem to want to entertain a discussion of good government by the people and for the people and of the people. It's our chamber after all. Another one, the eye of the storm on corruption in the elections, but also that there's a growing concern that there's Chinese police stations?
One minute.
Here in our country, on our soil, and, oh, the big river city Omaha made the news on that one. And very quickly, the last one, is government of, by, and for the people. I submit them to the record, I hope that you all read these before you left the professor who says he's gonna train you on rules of order, come in and train you to something that's maybe not so.
Thank you, anyone else wishing to speak to the Board of Commissioners about an item not on the agenda?
Luis Jimenez, 2709 Dewey.
Luis Jimenez, 2709 Dewey's Avenue. I live over at Leavenworth Business. It was interesting listening to citizen's comments just now. I want to remind Larry that he often lectures this board that we're a republic, and if he would accept the things that he says, it would inform him why you do some of the things that you do. So I want to talk about the sound equipment. The morning meetings over at the landing here, just outside of the chambers, when you have your meetings, you can hear the audio, and it's good. You can sit out there and listen to the meetings. At the 2:00 p.m. meeting, City Council, it is muted, so I can't do that. I can't go out there and sit down and listen to the meeting, so I don't understand what's going on. I told Jennifer Taylor, I told Marcos from the city about that, and they said they would relay it. I'm telling dot com right now why that is.
Okay.
You're not dot com?
Just go, let's note, there's not going to be a conversation. Just continue your remarks.
Okay. Well, I wasn't talking to you, sir. I'm talking to the Board. And that's, you know, that's not convenient for me because I want to step out for a moment and listen to the meetings. And on that topic, Larry complains that my friend Ford made a point of privilege to talk about the sound. If you, if the escalators weren't being operated on, I don't think you would have allowed Ford to come forward to say those things. And Larry waits till he has a comment to talk about the sound. So I think that's the difference. So yes, I do bring Ford to these meetings, and actually, I don't have to anymore because he lives down the street from here. Previously, he had been struck by a vehicle, so I was picking him up at the rehabilitation center where he was at. And Ford is mad that it took him so long to get assistance, to get to a residence after being homeless for a year and a half. And so that's why he comes forward and speaks to you, the Board, whose one of the mandates is to assist the needy. I agree with Ford that you can call CNA Francis, Satan Francis, because it's ambiguous as to what is going on over there. There's development, there's not development, there is all kinds of people. There's fences, there's not fences. Last time I went in that area to provide some sandwiches, it was late. It was at 9:00 p.m. And that's the time when the residents are allowed to go back in because they didn't meet the curfew to be indoors. And there was a fight that broke out. It was kind of orchestrated, kind of not, but it was violent, and it was in the street. And one person won the fight, the other one didn't, and the one that didn't, still after it was evident who won, wanted to fight. And the victor didn't want to participate again.
One minute.
Probably because he was tired, and it would require more energy to maintain that status. So I agree with Ford that the individuals that are there are suspect, and also that the organization, Satan Francis, is, needs investigation. They need to be investigated and probably, like, advised as to what their operations should look like if they want to continue helping those individuals. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else wishing to speak about an item not on the agenda?
Ahmed Fogarty, 521 North 38th Street. I've been before you several times in the past, always on the same issue, and that's the 42nd Street reuse of that facility for mental health, substance abuse, et cetera, and the proposal to build down at the jail site, a new jail and a new community center. As I've made clear before, I studied this pretty carefully as a retired lawyer, representing nobody but being an interested citizen. I thought today I'd kind of give a comprehensive thing that I'm going to term the ARPA Fundamental Clawback Avoidance Tactic, CAT. It's from my old military days. Everything came down to one mission, CAT. Clawback Avoidance Tactic. On the use of capital expenditures of that $54 or $55 million. One, the more you spend on capital expenditures, the higher the risk of clawback. Two, the less you spend on capital expenditures, and the more you devote to delivery and providing of services, improvement of the workforce in the mental health, behavioral health, and substance abuse disorder community, the less risk of clawback. Three, zero on capital expenditures, and all on service, training, coordinating of community people, and as organizations devoted to those tasks and hands-on delivery of better care, you get zero risk of clawback. I don't want to harangue, but I do want to point out something I ran into on Google just yesterday. Child Saving Institute only involved $300,000 that they got of ARPA money through the city of Omaha. And they used it all on raising the salaries of their hands-on people delivering mental health care to children. And training of their current staff and raising the pay. Now, somebody might say, oh, that's not a good deal. Well, it is a good deal because they also got more people applying for jobs there. They clearly had read the statute, and they clearly understood that once you get on the area of building buildings on ARPA money, you're in trouble and you're at risk. I don't want to leave without an idea. You've got to start grappling with this. I got an idea. I hope it doesn't create a catfight on the Board, but I'd say you ought to have your own little sub-commission of one advocate for the plan as it was first brought up, one opponent of it, and one neutral, and study a whole array of things, and then start talking to the Treasury Department. Those people are open. Their phones work. And come up in the next, oh, let's say, 60 days with some alternatives that you can implement quickly and risk-free. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Anyone else?
Hello, Amber Wood, Omaha. I just want to bring up something that I wanted to address from last meeting. We had a lot of people here who wanted to speak on a particular topic. I think it was, I don't know, 12, and then I had other people message me, other people on Zoom. And a lot of people take their time off of work. I mean, it's hard enough to get to these anyway on a middle of the day for a lot of people who have, you know, nine to five jobs. They took special time out of their day. They took the day off work. They used their PTO. They're not getting paid to be here. And they sat here and sat here, and we all sat here only to have agendas pushed back for another month. I would hope that this isn't by design. I don't know what the rules are on what comes first. However, if it's something that is regarding public safety or regarding something big in the community that's getting a lot of, I guess, publicity, then I would hope that perhaps it could be planned a little bit better so that more citizens can participate because it's already kind of hard enough for people to find links and things like that. So, you know, it just puts a bad taste in a lot of people's mouths who are here before, who really wanted to speak. And they asked me to bring that up if there was a forum for me to do that. So I want to pass that along, and from me also, it is very frustrating because you're here to, you listen and you sit, and then all of a sudden, oh, never mind, we're going to do it in a month. So take off more of your time. So I hope that you can take that into consideration in the future. Thank you.
Anyone else wishing to speak to the Board about an item not on the agenda? Seeing none, we'll move to public hearings. Our first public hearing is a public hearing and resolution appointing the trustees of Hospital Authority Number Two of Douglas County, Nebraska, in response to petitions of electors. This is brought on behalf of Don Roth from Kootak Rock Bond Counsel. This is the public hearing, and action can be taken after the public hearing is closed. So I would welcome you to the podium.
Madam Chair, Commissioners, I'm Joel Van Der Veen with the Kootak Rock Law Firm, 1650 Farnham Street. Don is one of my partners. I appreciate her help on this matter. As the chair says, this is a public hearing for the appointment of board members to the Hospital Authority Number Two of Douglas County. It's actually a reappointment of the existing five board members and who've served, in most cases, well, I think in all cases, multiple terms already and are willing to serve again. You've been provided in your materials brief resumes of those individuals. My role here is as bond counsel, frequent bond counsel to the authority. Mark Johnson with the Fulon Camp Firm is here as well to answer any questions. He serves as actual counsel to the authority. And I guess we'd be happy to answer any questions and ask that you'd consider the resolution to approve.
Thank you. Anyone else wishing to speak during this public hearing for or against this item? Seeing none, I will close the public hearing. What is the will of the Board? Motion by Commissioner Morgan, seconded by Commissioner Rogers. Please vote.
Motion passes seven to zero.
Next is a public hearing regarding the proposed approval of golf cart ordinances to allow golf cars to be driven within the following SIDs in Douglas County, Anchor Point, Majestic Point, Newport Hill, Newport Landing, Pine Creek, The Heritage, and Stratford Park, and I believe one of these. Which one?
Yeah, 425 Newport Landing needs to be laid over.
Newport Landing, we are going to remove from the item. And Teresa, do you want to go over the rules that we can do for this item during this public hearing?
Teresa, you're at County Attorney's Office. Sure. So the statute for the passing of an ordinance requires that the ordinance be read at three separate readings unless the Board votes to waive that or suspend that. And it requires six, requires approval of six commissioners in order to do that, so that'll be the first vote. If that passes, so we don't have to do the three readings, then the ordinances will need to be read by title or number. I think, I don't know that they have a number. They'll only be read by title, and then the move for adoption, and you'll need a majority on that, and that's four. So you'll need, it's a two-vote, two-vote process.
Okay, thank you. I will open up the public hearing for this item. Is there anyone here wishing to speak for or against this item?
Hello, my name is Jody Shealy. I just wanted to say thank you for taking the time today for this ordinance to move forward and be heard. I want to just represent the Anchor Point area and neighborhood, and the reason we're bringing this forward is there's been a lot of concerns about people definitely wanting this to be a legal situation so we don't waste any more resources from our sheriffs and unnecessary time for our law enforcement due to, you know, some of these people being concerned about golf carts. We want to make sure that we're following this in all the right ways and doing all the right things to make this legal. So I just want to say thank you for your time and listening, and hopefully you guys will vote in favor. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Anyone else wishing to speak during the public hearing for or against this item? Seeing none, I will close the public hearing. The first vote is to waive the three separate hearings of these items. Motion by Commissioner Friend, seconded by Commissioner Morgan. Any further questions or comments? Please vote.
We'll do a voice vote on this one. Commissioner Boyle, Commissioner Kavanaugh, Commissioner Friend, Commissioner Garcia, Commissioner Morgan, Commissioner Rogers, Madam Chair.
Yes.
Motion passes seven to, and just to clarify, we did remove Newport Landing from, or we will remove Newport Landing from the next vote.
Yes. Did you announce the?
Well, I guess.
I think it was seven to zero.
I apologize. Yes, the motion passed seven to zero.
Okay.
To waive the three reading requirement.
So the next vote is to approve the resolution, and I will read the resolution. Whereas pursuant to Nebraska Statute 23-187 and Nebraska Statute 60-6381-2B, this Board has authority to implement an ordinance to authorize the operation of golf car vehicles, golf carts, within Douglas County. And whereas some residents of the following sanitary and improvement districts, or the SIDs, have requested that this Board pass an ordinance to allow the operation of golf car vehicles on roads within those communities, 567 Anchor Point, 568 Majestic Point, 544 Newport Hill, 473 Pine Creek, 531 The Heritage, 528 Stratford Park. And whereas all applicable statutory requirements and procedures have been met regarding this request, and the necessary public hearing was held before this Board on August 8th, 2023, now therefore be it resolved by this Board of County Commissioners, Douglas County, Nebraska, that this Board hereby approves the attached golf cart ordinance for the above listed SIDs in Douglas County dated this 8th day of August, 2023. Is there a motion to approve? Motion by Commissioner Friend, seconded by Commissioner Rogers. Any further questions or comments? Please vote.
Commissioner Boyle, Commissioner Kavanaugh, Commissioner Friend, Commissioner Garcia, Commissioner Morgan, Commissioner Rogers, Madam Chair.
Yes.
Motion passes seven to zero.
All right, we'll move to Item C of the public hearings, Jacob Bender applicant. This is a special use permit to operate a landscape business on the property located at 19718 Military Road, Bennington, Nebraska, 68007, parcel number 1711610762. This is the public hearing, and Kent, the floor is yours.
Okay, good morning, Commissioners. Kent Holm, Environmental Services Director. I know you have a big agenda item coming up. I'm going to say just a couple of comments about all of these particular public hearings that deal with landscape businesses for special use permits. These are all very consistent with what you heard a few weeks ago. We had a couple of these applications come through. We're basically asking for the same special use permit for all three of these applicants. This one, Jacob Bender on Military Road. You can see the photo right here. That's the location. Very well-run. It is complying with everything we need right now. Two conditions on the special use. One is that there's no retail sales on the property and that- retail sales on the property, and that if the ownership of the part, of the lot changes, the special use goes away. Planning Commission recommended approval at their July 19 meeting, and here to answer any questions.
All right, this is the public hearing. Is there anyone wishing to speak for or against this item? Seeing none, I will close the public hearing. What is the will of the board? There is a motion by Commissioner Friend, seconded by Commissioner Boyle. Please vote.
Motion passes seven to zero.
The next public hearing, item D, is Barry Couch applicant, special use permit to operate a landscape business on a property located at 10110 North 186 Ave., Bennington, Nebraska, 68007, parcel number 0729880740. Again, this is the public hearing. Is there anyone here wishing to speak for or against?
Again, Kent Holm, Environmental Services Director, very much the same situation here, asking for a special use permit approval. Planning Commission recommended approval at their July 19 meeting. The operation here for Mr. Couch is in, basically on these two parcels. At the end of the cul-de-sac, very little, minimal impact here to the neighborhood. Good operation, very small, does not intend to go outside that building envelope. And again, no retail sales on the property. And if the property changes hands, the special use goes away. Here to answer any questions.
This is the public hearing. Is there anyone wishing to speak for or against? Seeing none, I will close the public hearing. What is the will of the board? Motion by Commissioner Rogers, seconded by Commissioner Friend. Any further questions
Motion passes seven to zero.
Public hearing, item E, Mercer Gunnels and Nick Irwin applicants, a special use permit to operate a landscape business on property located at 10404 North 204th Street, Elk Horn, Nebraska, 68022, parcel number 01129600004. Again, this is the public hearing. Anyone wishing to speak for or against?
Again, Kent Holm, Environmental Services Director, here on the map, you can see the location here. It's just north and a little bit west of the intersection 204th and Rainwood. Same conditions apply here. No retail sales on the property. And if the property changes hands, special use goes away. This, in this situation, they are intending to potentially expand the operation, but it's within the footprint that they've identified. Staff has no problems with that. Planning Commission recommended approval at their July 19 meeting. I'm here for any questions.
Anyone here wishing to speak for or against this item during the public hearing? Seeing none, I will close the public hearing. What's the will of the board? Motion by Commissioner Rogers, seconded by Commissioner Friend. Any further questions
Commissioner Rogers. Motion passes seven to zero.
The next public hearing is item F, Crown Castle USA as agent for AT&amp;T applicant, 8020 Katy Freeway, Houston, Texas, 77024, a special use permit to replace internet equipment on an existing tower parcel, number 0113130000. The address is 223899 Elk City Drive in Valley, Nebraska, 68064. This is the public hearing. I open it for comments for or against.
Again, Kent Holm, Environmental Services Director, you can see on the map the location of this particular cell tower. We use Center for Municipal Solutions to vet all of the applications that come through on wireless communications facilities. They have done that and recommended approval of this to, to staff and the Planning Commission. Planning Commission heard this on Jan, on July 19, and recommended approval. I'm here to answer any questions.
Is there anyone here wishing to speak for or against item F? Seeing none, what is the will of the board? Motion by Commissioner Rogers, seconded by Commissioner Friend. Any further questions
Motion passes seven to zero.
Next is item G, public hearing for text amendment to the zoning regulations to add the accessory dwelling unit, ADU residential use type. This is the public hearing for those wishing to speak for or against this item. Kent?
Kent Holm, Environmental Services Director, just to preface a couple of things and put this in context. Nationwide, we're seeing an issue with the lack of affordable housing. I think you kind of had an item on your agenda before, and thank you for taking that action. I think that was a very responsible thing to do. One of the things that, you may recall, this, this board helped to, to fund a supplement to the Omaha study, housing study for the Western Douglas County communities and so on. That is just being wrapped up, and we anticipate that will be out here in the coming weeks. One of the things that that does is recognizes the fact that, that ADUs, accessory dwelling units, are a potential option that can help in, in providing housing. MAP earlier this year did a zoning atlas assessment, and one of the things that was very deficient in our zoning code is the fact that we did not have this accessory dwelling unit option for housing. So, with that, we have worked with the Planning Commission over the last several months to craft a regulation that puts this housing option into our code. And so, that's what we have in front of you today. Laura is here to also address this. Basically, the, the Planning Commission voted to recommend approval of this at their July 19 meeting. We have some photos and things to show you what this looks like, what it, what it's not. And I'm going to turn this over to Laura to handle that, and we're available for any questions.
Good morning, Commissioners. Laura Dietrich, planning and zoning coordinator. The Planning Commission has recommended approval for the text amendments to the zoning regulations, adding ADU or accessory dwelling units as a residential use type. These regulations include items that are commonly found in other ADU regulations in other Nebraska jurisdictions. So, the text amendments are in Article 2, 3, 4, and 5, and I'm happy to answer any questions you might have.
All right, this is the public hearing. Is there anyone wishing to speak for or against? Commissioner Boyle?
I just, I just have some questions on the, on the ADUs. First is, do y'all know if there's a city of Omaha ordinance on ADUs? Is there, okay, and I'm curious if this kind of falls in line with that.
My understanding is that it does, that we have looked at other jurisdictions, including the city of Omaha, to kind of comply with what they have.
Okay. And then are there building codes? Again, I reviewed the information, but I didn't go any deeper and go to the accessory references. But are there building codes for these units as well?
Correct. There are building codes, and if someone applies for this or wants to put this on their property, they will have our building inspector have to inspect the buildings, and there will be proper setbacks.
Okay. And then per piece of property, if I read something correctly, it said that there could be one unit per property? So, someone can't build like a tiny, tiny house area on their, like, put three or four of them on one lot. Is that correct?
Correct. There would only be one. It would not be a village. It would just be one additional unit on a property.
Okay, when you, when you say.
Sorry, something happened here.
When you say a, there we go. When you say a property, is that, for example, in Western Douglas County, there could be in, in one piece of property that has 10 acres? That would still just be one ADU on that piece of property?
Correct.
Okay, so it would have to be zoned differently in order to be broken up for multiple units?
We would not rezone. This is not a rezoning. This would be permitted by right of the property owner.
Okay, okay. All right, thank you.
Any further comments? This is the public hearing. Anyone wishing to comment for or against this item? Commissioner Kavanaugh?
Thank you. Just for the public record, we have a significant number of people who are watching us today. So, what's the definition of an ADU?
It's an accessory dwelling unit?
Yes, could you speak into the mic, please?
I apologize. It's an accessory dwelling unit?
I know. What is an accessory dwelling unit?
So, I'll, I'll read you the definition as we have agreed upon.
Okay.
So, it's a living quarter within a principal or accessory building located on the same premises as a principal dwelling unit for the use of, for the use by permanent or temporary guests of the occupant of the residence. Such units shall have independent living facilities, kitchen, restroom, sleeping area, a separate entrance, and maybe rented or leased.
Okay. So, I grew up in South Omaha, and it was fairly common to have what they called grandma houses in people's backyards. Is that essentially what we're talking about here?
Yes.
Okay. And those were single-person dwellings, really, usually associated with the family and the principal dwelling. But from what you're saying here, it could be a guest house as well?
It could be.
And it could be a rental property as well?
It could be.
Okay. Are those not currently permitted?
They are not.
Hmm, okay. Thank you.
You are welcome.
Any further comments? This is the public hearing. Did you want to speak for, during the public hearing?
Yeah. Larry Stewart, 5015 Lafayette Avenue, Omaha, 68132. There was no link on the website last night to get a further definition of what they're talking about here. Excuse me, but I do get a bit ridiculous at times. But this is hilarious. Affordable housing units, and now we're down to, what, ADAs? What are they, like matchbox cars or something? Folks, if you can't afford the housing, maybe you need to stop spending the money that causes the housing prices and taxes to go up. We blew up a lot of big buildings, and we had railroad tracks all over downtown Omaha. We could use boxcars. Oh, we've got these big buses called Orbit that hardly anybody rides, even on Dodge Street during rush hour. You could cut those in half for forts, put those on a boxcar, or better yet, a tractor trailer. Then you could go all, all over Omaha. And there could be entertainment vehicles. You could sell them as houses, affordable units. But you have to regulate them, and that pushes the cost of everything up, doesn't it? This is kind of, why don't we stop this silly business? If you can't afford the housing, stop coming up with smaller things to afford. And then building these damn high-rises with multi-use things that you give money away to the developers, but not to citizens, and then it ends up being a $400,000 condo? Are those, those are not affordable. So, let's stop some of that and push the prices down towards the, oh, there's 10 houses on, one block south of Dodge Street, I'm sorry, and west of Saddle Creek. Could have been very nice little affordable houses for small families. But we're going to tear them down for, for a TIF development. They're all boarded up. I don't know whether people got a good price for them or not. But why don't we stop some of that? Affordable housing for an apartment building that's 400,000, maybe?
Thank you.
Anyone else wishing to speak during this public hearing for or against this Seeing none, I will close the public hearing. What is the will of the board? Motion by Commissioner Boyle, seconded by Commissioner Rogers. Any further questions
Motion passes seven to zero.
Thank you, Commissioners.
Thank you.
Next, we'll move to our committees, the first being the Finance, the Budget Report as presented. And item two, there is a resolution authorizing an award of $100,000 to the North Omaha Cultural Center to help develop a tourism and multicultural center. Is there a motion to approve? Motion by Commissioner Kavanaugh, seconded by Commissioner Friend. Commissioner Kavanaugh?
Thank you. I am glad to take a portion of the, our allocation that each of us received to support the multicultural facility in North Omaha contained in this resolution. It's actually, I, I believe, named after Senator Ernie Chambers, who, for many, many years, I think half a century or more, represented this part of our community in the Nebraska Unicameral Legislature. I have great admiration for him and the decades of public service that he has provided to our community, and still does. The facility seeks to preserve some of the history of the North Omaha area of our community, and to provide a platform for cultural activities in that portion of our community that would be open to people countywide, actually open to the public in general. I, I think this is a great tribute to a great man who has had a great career as a public servant. And I'm glad to join my colleagues, Commissioners Rogers, Boyle, and others who have made contributions to this facility. And I look forward to attending the ribbon cutting when it does finally open. I also want to commend Gayla Lee Chambers, Senator Chambers' daughter, who has been the president and CEO of this initiative to bring this to fruition. And I think that the facility, once it is finally completed, will provide a great home for, among others, the John Beasley Theater, the Legacy Library of Senator Chambers, which is extensive, a ballroom and a conference center, a North Omaha tourist center, a dance studio, classrooms, boardrooms, a media center, gift shop, training center, and other services to the community, which should be a real attraction. And I, I look forward to participating in events there far into the future. So, I'd urge everybody to support this initiative. Our support is, I think, going to be key to getting it up and running, but I think it's a long process, and I would strongly urge community participation in this very worthy cause. Thank you.
Any further questions or comments?
Motion passes seven to zero.
Next, we'll move to the Child and Youth Committee. A resolution directing the current Douglas County Youth Center shall continue to operate, and the new Youth and Family Support Center shall not be opened until the current youth center's detainees population matches the operational capacity of the new Youth and Family Support Center, 54 Youth, for a minimum of six months. This was laid over from Tuesday, June 27 meeting. I will now open up the item for discussion.
Good morning, Commissioners.
Good morning.
My name is Sandra Preston, 2924 Fontanelle Boulevard, Omaha, Nebraska, 68104. I am here with a concern regarding this item that you are referring to in regards to the youth center. I am here not as a mother and grandmother and great-grandmother, but also as an advocate for DCYC, as well as an advocate for my community, and also for the youth of our city, and also the families that are affected by criminal activity and other things that some of our youth are not responsible for, but should be held accountable for. I am a strong advocate of DCYC, and the reason that I am a strong advocate of DCYC is because I have spent, since 2002, the majority of my time at that facility with and through release ministries. As a matter of fact, the last time I stood here in this office, this location, it was to receive a recommendation and a proclamation to release ministries for the ministry that we provided to our youth at DCYC, through our Bible studies, mentorship, all of that. At that time, I was even the outreach mentor coordinator with Release Ministries, going into the units with the youth, matching them up with mentors, and all of that. I am very, my heart has been very heavy, this is very dear to my heart, because I know that our youth deserve everything that any child deserves. Parents have concerns, community has concerns, and I commend the new Juvenile Justice Center for what it is trying to accomplish, as DCYC is trying to accomplish. And DCYC is a very fine facility for the children that need to be in a secured facility. However, the ball has been dropped year after year after year after year regarding financial needs, and thusforth, I can remember back in the day when we had the Z-mod, and that didn't work out. Now, I'm seeing a repeat of what we're trying to do here. Everyone wants the same thing. We are looking for our children to have the proper guidance. DCYC provides that. I know what the staff does in that facility. I've seen them work with the youth. I've seen them provide the needs of the youth. But right now, we have a whole new, different young group that are committing crimes that just are unconscionable. They have care, they have no caring in their hearts, and what I see as a grandmother, as a mother, is the ball being dropped on these youth. If you do the crime, you have to pay the time. There's no accountability. We need the accountability, but we also need the rehabilitation as well. However, it doesn't appear that everyone is communicating. There's a breakdown in the system. The communication is not being quite done the way that it should be, and it's almost like the ball is dropped. You know, we're doing this, you're doing that, we've got this new facility for our judges, and da-da-da-da, and no one's really, I don't see the children being the main point here, because there are families that suffer behind this. I've been on every side of it. When I started going into DCYC, before I even became involved as a volunteer or even with Release Ministries, my youngest son, who is now 45 years old, was a gangbanger, and I was going in and out trying to get him out. His whole life has been shifted and turned around because of DCYC and the staffing there.
Time.
And I'm just trying to say.
That's time, ma'am.
Okay, is it, is it one more? Okay. I'm sorry, but just, I just want everyone to work together.
Yes.
Everyone to work together for the betterment of our children.
Thank you.
Okay? Thank you.
Thank you. Before we continue, Commissioner Garcia?
Thank you, Madam Chair. Just as a brief recap, since, of course, we had a rich debate six weeks ago before the delay, and so, of course, much of the rationale has been provided, but I'll give a brief overview once again, since it's before us currently. So, there's a few different aspects to this resolution, but the main one to start with is a concern for capacity. We know that the new facility is smaller in regards to beds with a max of 64, but a operating capacity of 80% would equal to 52 beds, and there's also issues where, not issues, but rather realities, where we have to separate boys and girls, which takes away a ward when you have to house a girl, which is common. That ward comes with a certain amount of beds that automatically goes towards females, and then what's left for males. And so, we have to absolutely keep in mind the reality of how many beds we're working with at the new facility once we fully transition there one day. But at the moment, we're also looking at the data before us that's provided by our own staff in regards to what the numbers have been lately and within the last few years. So, if we look at the first, if we look at two different sample sets, from the beginning of this year, in January, we had 89 at the peak, 89 peak February, 81 peak March, 84 peak April. The averages are not too much different, 84, 85, 75, 79, respectively, for those same months that I just mentioned. And so, if we're, in recent history, have been between the 80s and 90s, as of this month, we've been in the mid 70s, I can't personally say I'm confident that by November 1st, when we were supposed to start the transition, that we will be at the, around 52 or less for an operating capacity, without the possibility of spiking up again and being in a dilemma where we're in a smaller facility with not enough capacity. So, just to showcase one example that, you know, there are occasional spikes in the youth that come in on any given day. One piece given to us by our staff member titled "Day-Over-Day Population Fluctuations", there's a footnote that says that the largest day-over-day increase in 2022 was plus eight youth on April 7, 2022. So, that's one example where, you know, there could be a group fight at the mall, at the park, an incident overnight on the weekend, where there is an influx of six to eight youth that just all of a sudden come in over the weekend on any given day. So, you know, I just give that as an example, because we're not making up the scenario where spikes do occur. We don't want to get down to 54 or 52 tomorrow or in December, and all of a sudden, we spike up again to 65, 70. And if we're fully transitioned to the smaller facility with an operating capacity of 52, what are we going to do in that scenario? We're going to be in a dilemma, or perhaps judges, probation are going to have to send youth to other jurisdictions, other states. We don't know exactly what would happen, but that's a likely scenario, and I personally don't want to be in that situation where we don't have the capacity to meet the need that's before us. We run the Youth Detention Center.
One minute.
That's a function of Douglas County, and so, we've got to make sure that we do it well, and we've got to make sure that we meet the capacity that the reality of the numbers are showing us at this given moment and for the foreseeable future. So, capacity is the biggest need. I'll mention the second piece that I had here was financial. So, if we start a, if we start a transition to the new center, and we see that we're going to continue to need more capacity, then we may be in a dilemma where we're going to need to keep open the outgoing center, the larger center, as we transition to the new center, and for a prolonged period of time, we may need to keep both centers open longer than suspected if we start this transition already this year. And we got the figures, keeping two centers open for two years, or, excuse me, for a full year will cause an extra $3 million, and I don't want to be in that scenario. Thank you.
Thank you. Commissioner Friend?
Thank you, Madam Chair. This issue's been obviously discussed quite extensively, not just over the last few weeks or the last couple of months, but it's been discussed pretty extensively over the last six years. Well, three of the board members here were not part of any of those discussions. Everything changes, nothing stays the same, especially in regard to public policy. The point of this resolution, I'm going to piggyback a little bit on what Commissioner Garcia said, because his name is first, mine was second. I think it's fair that we at least try to communicate, not just with the rest of the Commissioners, but with the citizens of Douglas County as to why a resolution like this is on the agenda. It's my contention, and I'm going to try not to repeat myself, because like I said, we've, we've done this before, but it's my contention that we need more time to implement any strategy related to transition or closure of a functional DCYC. Yesterday, there were 73 youth in that facility. One was a girl. We have the functional capacity, as Commissioner Garcia pointed out, of anywhere from 54 to 58, depending on who you ask, and that gets a little cloudy. But the functional capacity isn't 64. I think that's all we know. It's also my contention that putting subject matter experts at a table, possibly putting subject matter experts at a table, call it a working group, call it a task force, call it whatever you want, provide ideas about utilization of the new Juvenile Justice Center going forward would be wise at this point. County attorney, public defender, state probation, juvenile court judges, the DCYC management or staff, Douglas County Sheriff's Office, Omaha Police Department, key community players in 501(c)(3), key, with verifiable success metrics related to programming, and of course, even some Douglas County Commissioners to set an agenda or to regulate or moderate. Some would say, well, we did that. We did that four years ago, we did that five years ago. Well, we need to do it again, because the subject matter experts are not here, not us, not the seven people sitting behind these placards. The subject matter experts are out there. We need to do it again. That's my contention. If we don't, shame on us. If we do, and we don't come up with any new conclusions, what have we lost? You're afraid of wasting the county attorney's time? You're afraid of wasting the public defender's time? Don't be afraid of that. Let them worry about that. When this group has formulated, when this working group, or task force, or whatever else has formulated ideas, they can actually articulate a strategy, then I think we're in a better place to possibly make a transition or potentially closer to the closing of a Douglas County Youth Center. Right now, we are not there. I think this resolution has three key functional items, ramifications, purposes. This resolution has three key purposes. One, provides more time. What's the hurry? It gives us more time. But the ideas related to this transition, I think that that's, I think that's prudent. Let's do it. Second aspect to this, it provides us opportunities, potential opportunities. We know that that Juvenile Justice Center can be valuable.
One minute.
It's there, it's been built, it can be valuable. Have that input implemented, and actually, that provides us an opportunity. Finally, it relieves us of the real concern that we are unnecessarily dangerously reducing Polk County in Des Moines lacks capacity. You know what they're doing right now? You know what the state of Iowa's doing? They're shipping youth from Polk County to other jurisdictions to detain them. They don't have enough space. We're about to repeat that. Final point is, we may come to the point where we can functionally run two facilities for an awful long time. We might have to do that, but I think the only way we find that out is to actually go in and analyze.
Time.
Thank you, Madam Chair.
Commissioner Boyle?
Yeah, thank you. So, first and foremost, we're all very aware that the status quo as far as juvenile detention is not working, and we definitely need solutions besides detention. At the same time, we're not doing a good job of accountability either. There are, you know, kids can't be picked up and then released without some type of pass through the judicial system. So, we get that by involving judges in the process more so than they are now. They're not involved with every single individual that gets picked up, and so, I think we need to do a better job of making sure that they're involved in the decision-making to see what is, what is this, this individual's environment? What was the exact circumstance that they were surrounded in? Were they, were they influenced by others? Did they have stable homes and all that? So, I think there are reasons that our judges need to be more involved in these decisions. We all know it's irresponsible to close the doors of the current facility if the numbers are too high. That's a public safety issue, and we simply are not going to allow that. At the same time, it's really not financially feasible to run two facilities. It's just not a good idea from, it's really our tax dollars. We just had our Board of Equalization meeting and a lot of issues with property taxes going up, but this is something that tax dollars pay for. The state is actually responsible for some of this, but it's a lot easier to have kids go through Douglas County, so we're paying for things that really the state should be paying for. So, I feel, again, the status quo is not working. It's a different world now than it was 20 years ago when DCYC was opened. We do have more programs coming in, but we really need more and more. We can't turn our society into just a system where we lock up every single person. I mean, we already detain way too many people. We really have to figure out ways to help folks become productive citizens once again. At the same time, we have to make sure that, that public safety is taken care of and that, and that people aren't afraid for their, their lives or their belongings, their families or anything. So, we need better programs to avoid recidivism. Right now, someone may go into the Juvenile Justice Center system and end up going home the next day, or they could go home in 45 days and still commit the same crimes. So, we need to make sure the programs are in place so that that doesn't happen. So, again, it may not matter if they're released the same day or released in 45 days. We still have to get programs in place to deter that. So, the bottom line is, we, our goal really with this is to, we should not be running two facilities. It's not financially feasible. Second, it may not be necessary, because we hopefully can get more, more time to sort this out. We have to work towards the responsible closure of the old facility ultimately, however. Bottom line is, we need to treat kids who can, will respond to treatment, are good candidates to be treated, and we need to get our judges involved to do that. At the same time, we need, really do need to detain those kids who need to be detained. So, so I think it's trying to balance all of that, and right now, I think one of our citizens said we need to communicate and work together, and I feel like that piece is something we're really working hard on behind the scenes, but it's not, it's not quite up to capacity yet. So, so that is our goal, is to communicate better, get the judges involved, really find out who are the kids that need treatment, who are the kids that need to be detained, and, and really keep public safety as a forefront. What's right, close, and second to that is making sure that those kids who get, who need services get services so they don't repeat. So, thank you.
Commissioner Garcia?
Thank you. Just a few more added notes. Of course, when the conceptualization of the new center was occurring four or five years ago, a lot has changed since then, and naturally, the planning for programming, the planning for buildings and services.
And naturally, the planning for programming, the planning for buildings and services often do need to evolve and change as society and communities change over time. So four or five years ago, the pandemic had not happened yet. The pandemic, we know, affected youth in many different ways, from mental health to educational losses, et cetera. So there was a huge variable between the time that this was all conceptualized and now with the pandemic that occurred. There's also, has been an uptick in youth gun violence that is beyond the norm of what we have seen in history. If we look back 10, 12 years, a gun charge for a youth was not common at all. And now, it's very much the average for us to have about 30 youth on adult charges in our detention center, many of which are gun charges. And this isn't an attempt to point a finger at any specific person or entity, it's a societal issue. Why is this occurring? There's no simple answer for that. But there's also no simple solution either that's going to be tied to just detention or just nonprofits or just probation. All of us definitely have to be working together to try to analyze the different variables that are causing more higher-level charges with our youth. And the flip side of that is of course, addressing it in a way that both tries to tackle the issues that might be causing more violence at the higher end. Of course, always the angle of rehabilitating our youth, but also, of course, public safety as well. If we have youth that are out there that are sometimes on controlled substances, using drugs, and have a gun under their pillow or in their backpack, that's kind of a serious thing, of course. And we already know that the teenage brain is very impulsive. We already know the teenage brain is not fully formed. Add on top of that, peer influences that might be very much not positive for them, add on top of that potential drug use. We sometimes need to take a youth out of that environment into a safe detention center for a time period in which we can work towards rehabilitating them and then finding a proper placement that will both keep working on the rehabilitation of that youth, but also keep people safe that have been victimized by youth or in general, the public and the community. So all those angles are a part of this puzzle, which is indeed a complicated puzzle. So to that end, you know, three, four years ago, the notion was made that at this point there would be more robust programming that would have taken down these numbers to where they need to be for the new facility. The original plan to transition was July 1st of this year, but of course, we were not ready to transition at that time. And so I do not see that robust programming quite yet to the extent that needs to be there. You know, there are some, the one big one, of course, is Radius, which I think will do amazing work and has started to take some youth, but it's going to take multiple novel approaches, multiple angles of programming at various levels of intensity to really tackle this issue. And I do think we need some more time to create novel approaches that again, will bring different angles to this debate. So with that, as mentioned, and piggyback off of Commissioner Friend, it will take talking to various stakeholders and sitting down with them and working with them. And sometimes people will disagree with us, sometimes people will have some resistance right away, but that's the key towards problem-solving, creating solutions together, compromising. Diversity of thought is not a bad thing. When you come into a room, there's going to be rich debate and sometimes tension, but if you stick the course, then we all come out better with better solutions. Thank you.
Thank you. Go ahead, ma'am.
Good morning.
Good morning.
My name is Theresa Nagron. I'm the Executive Director of U-Turn, which is located in Omaha, and we do a lot of work in the youth center currently. We're in there every day. We are focused on those that are in the detention center on gun charges and violent incidents. I'm not a person that's going to sit up here and talk about the number of beds and things of that nature, but I will speak to the communication piece, having the right people at the table, and I want to express my gratitude to hear from each one of you that have spoken about the need to have consensus, the right people at the table. Who identifies who those people are is one question I would say, but the thing that I really want to point out is that when you do have the right people at the table, there has to be fidelity to the process. Public safety is paramount in everything that any city should look at or any county. But I think we have processes that are already in place, but you have to have fidelity to the processes that are there. And that is what, in my sitting back from the outside looking in, that's what I have seen. There's been a lot of talk about a lot of things, not necessarily from you, but others in the community that are supposed to be in leadership positions, and I don't hear a lot of solutions except for lock them up. So I agree that there needs to be a, some kind of a group of people that can sit down, but again, the key has to be, there has to be some fidelity to whatever it is that is being spoken about, whether it be assessments of the youth, the family, the facility, what needs to happen, the charging, the number of days that somebody's held in detention, why they're being held that number of days. All of that needs to be something that there has to be fidelity to, not just, I'm stuck in my corner and I can't see any other way out. So that's all I really had to say. Thank you.
Thank you. Commissioner Kavanaugh?
Thank you. This discussion is interesting, and I appreciate what was stated by Commissioner Friend about three of the seven Commissioners weren't here at the outset. I was and have pointed out just about everything that was discussed here this morning since we began this with the Chin Study in January of 2018. And I agree with the concerns expressed by Commissioner Boyle, Commissioner Friend, and Commissioner Garcia. It's five years and eight months into this project, and these things should have been upfront and addressed five years ago. They weren't. What was addressed five years ago was the funding for this. And just to give a chronology, the original estimate by the Chin Study, which was the study commissioned in January of 2018, was that the project would cost $87,169, $169,881. That was immediately revised upwards to $106,192,575 by addendum to the Chin. That was further upgraded by the people who were proposing this, including my colleagues, Commissioner Borges and Rogers, in August of 2018 to $120 million, at which point we proposed alternatives utilizing refurbishment of the existing Douglas County Youth Center at 42nd Street. That number was taken forward for a building commission bond issue, which coincidentally did not require a vote of the people, for $119 million. And in March of 2019, the total bond issue was estimated, not at $119, but at $114 million. Subsequently, again, upgraded by $5 million. In December of 2020, the newly created Douglas County Justice Center Committee proposed a budget of $129 million, $10 million over the approved bond issue. And that was pretty much considered to be the cost of the project going forward until we received a breakout by the Omaha Douglas County Public Building Commission in February, which was delivered to this board, put in the record by me, that the funding for the entire project, the total funding, was actually $139,400,000. Total expenditures to date at that time were $113,293,845, and remaining funds to be dispersed, $26,106,155, for a total of $139,400,000, $129,400,000, on a project that started off This is incredibly bad planning, incredibly incompetent fiscal oversight. And I've made a record of this all along. My three colleagues who weren't here, I think, all came on board while this thing was already moving. Financing had been approved and the construction was underway. Last week, I pointed out that this project is, over time, as has been pointed out here today, was supposed to open July 1st, 2023. It's August 8th, 2023. So no question, it's over time. Was supposed to be the bond issue, $119 million, or the construction budget, $128 million, and is now at $139,400,000 and counting. So it's over budget as well. I point these things out because if we don't take the time, as been proposed here, to kind of reset on this really catastrophic experience to date, it's only going to go further wrong. Clearly, the experts that we have, Commissioner Friend points out, I'll come back.
Commissioner Friend?
Thank you, Madam. Thank you, Madam Chair. I wanted to add, I don't have to say this, but I'm going to say it. I've gotten to know everybody on this board pretty well, and I respect them a great deal, each one of them. I can look them in the eyes and I can tell them how much I respect them. I don't have to say that, I think they know that. Commissioner Kavanaugh, that includes you. I just, I understand what you're saying, just so you know. Just so people are clear, history's valuable. History's important, okay? I get that, I understand what he's saying. It's always important to point out successes and failures because those are blueprints and those are track records, and those are things that can lead us into the future. I will say though, that because I believe there's a lot of good people in the community and on this board, that were on this board six years ago, that did good work on this. Their hearts and their minds were in the right place. I am not demeaning any of that. I hope that it's clear. My intent is not to demean any of that or to relitigate previous decision-making. That's not necessary. I could do that, I could go back to the legislature 20 years and relitigate all kinds of bad decisions I made or good decisions I made and watch people relitigate the decisions I made. I could do that all day long. What we're working on right now and dealing with is a practical problem right at this very moment. I hope people respect my thought process on that. Because if, and this is a little extreme, but if we shut the doors to DCYC today, we as a Board of Commissioners do not have the authority, there's a separation of powers, we do not have the authority to say what's going to happen to those 15 youth. The judges, the state are going to decide what happens to them. Again, I've said this before, I'd love to have that authority, I don't. This is a practical problem right at this moment. I don't think it's going to be any different on November 1st. I don't think the issue's going to be too much different on January 1st. To deal with that practical problem, what I'm saying is, I think we need options and opportunities. This delay could give us options and opportunities. I've talked about 501(c)(3) sitting at this table, in this working group that I'm talking about. I've talked about the county attorney, the public defender, Douglas County Youth Center, all of these folks. Why not? If we don't do it, people are going to look at us and go, what, so you don't like analysis? You don't like research? This stuff never, this practical problem is not going away. If this does not succeed today, this practical problem exacerbates itself. So Commissioner Kavanaugh, I appreciate what you're saying, history's important. I'm saying if you narrow it down and if you become really acute, this is what we're dealing with right now. And the numbers are going up, and we don't have any control over them, folks. That's the bottom line. Madam Chair, thank you for the time.
Thank you. Commissioner Kavanaugh?
Thank you. And I appreciate what Commissioner Friend says. We're put in a position of making some lemonade out of these incredible lemons. And you know, I'm more than willing to work with folks on reasonable way forward. I would point out that the resolution itself today is academic. Because today, the Douglas County Youth Detention Facility across the street does not have an occupancy permit to allow a single child to spend a single day there. We could not legally open it if we wanted to. So the fact that we're going to pass a resolution, hopefully, to delay opening it is only a recognition of the legal reality that despite this five years and eight months and millions and millions of dollars, we don't have a facility that we could even legally open if we wanted to. Now, if you want an exhibit of bad planning, it's take five years and eight months and $140 million and build something that actually, interestingly enough, has a construction cost greater than the cost estimate by our appraiser of the brand-new, virtually, First National Bank Tower on 16th and Dodge Street. This $140 million is more than the appraised value that we just passed on of the First National Bank Center at 16th and Dodge. Congratulations. You own a facility that arguably is the most expensive piece of real estate in Nebraska. You can't use a big portion of it for what it was supposed to be, and you haven't used any of the resources that have been expended to upgrade the facility where children have actually been staying for the last five years and eight months. You know, you talk about fiddling while Rome burns, what about those children who five years and eight months ago were 14 years old? Where are they now? They're adults. And many of them, unfortunately, are in the criminal justice system because we didn't take $140 million and devote it to their care and well-being. Children age every single day. And every single day that's gone by in the last five years and eight months, while the bill has gone up and up and up, children have been at 42nd Woolworth in the field club Martin Meadows neighborhood, which we could have refurbished to look like a boarding school with security around it, while we build a cell block over here that we can't use. We can't legally open a month and a week after it was supposed to be open and tens of millions of dollars over budget. So you know, it's important to understand, recognition is the first step to recovery. We need to recall what this thing started out as. We had an option to go to 42nd Street for a fraction of this $140 million total budget and refurbish that years ago. It could have been up and running by now. And all of those children who during the last five years and eight months have passed through this thing would have benefited by that. All these programs that we're supposed to have to lower the average daily population from the 70s where it is now to somewhere in the 50s or 40s that it needs to be for this cell block to be usable, all of those programs, where were they five years ago? Where was all this planning five years ago? Where was this dialogue with judges five years ago? The talk was there. Judges were talked to.
One minute.
But somehow, some way, this thing became, what I warned, a real estate construction thing, a scheme for real estate and construction, rather than anything to help the children who have passed through our doors for the last five years and eight months and now will. will for sometime into the future. Because we have to try to make the best of a bad situation. So I'm gonna join with my colleagues in supporting this resolution as a recognition of the reality that we can't legally open this thing today. And we're way over budget, and we're gonna be way, way over time, but we'll try to make it better going forward. But it's important to understand how we got here, and that's why I've outlined for you the chronology of the sad tale of a real estate construction scheme that should have been something to help the children of our community. Thank you.
Commissioner Morgan?
I didn't plan to speak until after some of the people that are here that waited the last time to talk and listen to that, but I have to speak because I think there's so much incorrect information that was just stated. We didn't spend one hundred and forty million dollars to build a youth center. We were mandated to add some courtrooms by the legislature, and that's where the discussion started. And I hope one of my other colleagues on this board will correct me. I'd like that. This youth center is twenty-three to twenty-seven million dollars. And it was, the project was under budget and it was stated at building commission meetings and other places, which Jeff or Jerry Leahy were here to state that. I wanna thank my colleagues for making correct remarks and especially Roger Garcia, when you spoke about where we were five years ago. And the difference of what we see as far as adult crime and mass shootings and everything else that's taken place since COVID, uh, four years ago, uh, four, or less, just a little bit less than four years ago, uh, has changed things dramatically. Even yesterday, uh, the mental health situation that our law enforcement dealt with on the interstate with shooting and, uh, a naked individual there, um, and so on. So I wanna listen to the others, but I wanted to state it correctly that that wasn't a one hundred and forty million dollar project for the youth. That was for the county attorney, and I stand to be corrected, and I think he's gonna speak, who I respect greatly, was in five offices, his own office flooding more than just a few times, and so on. And the courtrooms that we built, and I've been there. I don't know if the information's accurate, and I, you know, maybe our chairperson knows. I didn't know we didn't have this certificate of occupancy. Uh, I just was, if it's okay to repeat what you handed me, uh, we have an occupancy permit, and he might be talking about jail standards. I'm not sure what that is, but we have an occupancy permit. So there's continuous misinformation, uh, and I'm sorry that has to continue about it over budget, one hundred and forty million dollar projects, so on. What I'm concerned about is a couple things. Public safety is my priority, and it's tied with doing more for helping young people like Radius is gonna do and other programs in our community. I attended a funeral, Annie and I, last night for Mark Dare. For four hours, Christ a King. And I heard the people speak about what he did, individuals for their sons, daughters that wouldn't be here today had not bid for that program. Of heart ministries. I've known Mark since he was a little boy. It was his birthday Saturday, and he died of a heart attack on last Thursday morning.
One minute.
Thanks.
Thank you, Peter. Ma'am?
Hi, my name is Alicia Sexton. I reside at sixteen oh seven Laird Street, um, six eight one one zero. Um, I'd like to thank you for allowing me to speak today as my voice has not been heard through the justice system. My son was murdered on August thirtieth, and I was a victim as well. Um, they call these kids juveniles, um, they call them kids. They are not kids, they're premeditated murderers. Some kids, um, can be rehabilitated, some cannot, as we have heard. These kids were already in the system in group homes that allowed them to walk away and run away. They call these kids runners. Um, they had ankle monitors, they cut them off. They still premeditated a murder and filed through with the murder. They committed it, it, it happened. Then they are allowed to be charged as juveniles. One of them could be tried as an adult, which they did not do. I guess that fell on deaf ears as well for the judge, um, Breszendorf, Leanne Breszendorf. She could have charged this one juvenile as an adult, which she didn't. I don't understand that. Um, we're giving these kids a lot of passes, um, to commit and further, um, come together with a better way of committing crimes that they wanna commit and get away with them when we provide them to go to group homes and detention centers, um, and seal their records from the community, so the communities don't know what they've done because they're juveniles. These kids are gonna be, they could be out today, um, if a group home would accept them. They would be in a community near you guys and your families and your neighbors. Again, community people. I think that we definitely need to keep the detention center open. Um, we definitely need to keep some of these kids in the centers. We get a lot of funding through a lot of partnerships, programs, um, that doesn't come back into our kids. Um, I see a lot of funding, people show up for prayer walks and vigils, uh, those types of things, but there's no real programs to give back to our North Omaha youth. Um, I don't see them taking them from jails to work. They have some so-called programs. Mostly the funding and the grants that go to these programs are to facilitate income for their employ, their, their employees. Um, there's a lot of that going on, but none of it rarely comes back to the community and for our kids. In my community, they just built a skate ramp on the corner of Twentieth and, I wanna say that might be Pratt. It's not even a lot, it's not one full lot, but we have two full tennis courts that are ran down, you can't play tennis on them, but they didn't build a skate, built a skate ramp there for the kids to utilize, they have a one corner. So there's a lot of things that could be done in our communities, um, to help our kids. Um, I hear a lot of numbers going on, money, um, what they're spending, youth centers, what aren't getting spent, what's been promised. The mayor spent millions on downtown, but we're blocks away on Sixteenth and Laird. Um, it doesn't look like anything's going on down there. It's, uh, boarded up homes, dilapidated homes. Um, our neighborhoods are in serious trouble while they're still building up parts of the cities that don't contribute to the youth or making it better for the youth. Um, I'm here today to hope that you guys do come to a resolution, money-wise, um, for this and put some money into our kids and into our OPS school systems, give our kids chances from the beginning, um, not when it's too late, not when we're trying to rehabilitate. Um, set them up the same way that other kids are set up in other districts. Um, I'm for the youth, but I am not for killers. I'm not for, um, kids that are not, that cannot be rehabilitated. Um, I ask you guys to do better, not just for me and my community, but for your community too, because they're gonna be in your communities as well. Thank you for your time.
Thank you. Next?
My name's Amber Wood, Omaha, and I'm sorry for your loss. I also am a mother of someone who was, excuse me, who was shot by felons with guns, uh, felons that grew up in the very system that a lot of you on this board have been a part of for a very long time, since their youth. Felons involved with that who were also on federal supervision or pre-trial release who don't care about the laws. Now, common sense, public safety, um, Commissioner Friend is right, Commissioner Garcia is right. You need to listen to what Commissioner Friend is saying, in my opinion. Um, everything that he said, it, it makes sense. We are in now. We are not five years ago, we are not, uh, ten years ago, we are now and what we're dealing with. And when the comment is made about wasting tax dollars, um, or if people don't wanna pay for things because it's wasting tax dollars, I also say that sometimes some of these meetings are wasting tax dollars because people sit here, elected officials sit here waiting to speak on things all day. And this isn't, this doesn't happen, you know, it hasn't been just one time. How much is it costing the taxpayers when we need to hear from people like the sheriff, when we need to hear from the prosecutors? But they're sitting there, waiting, and then nothing gets done because we push it off. That's a problem, and I hope that we don't have to see that anymore, because I feel like that's wasteful. And what Commissioner Kavanaugh said, I have one word that comes to mind, and that's FUBAR. You have to fix it. You can't go off of what was, you have to look at what's now. And, um, you know, as just a normal citizen who's fired up because her daughter was murdered, you know, public safety, again, needs to be number one. There's three more people that just were recently killed. Now, my daughter was murdered by people who grew up in the system that's broken, that didn't teach them anything, that didn't rehabilitate anyone. Now, these people were murdered by kids that are in the system currently, juveniles that aren't learning from being sent home. These kids are screaming for help, and not detaining them is not giving them help. So, consequences teach. I mean toddlers, you teach them, you burn your hand, you learn. Consequences teach. Why are we stopping the consequence? Back to more common sense, the county is growing, that's something else you can't control. That's something else that you welcome, right? Let's let this development happen, let's let this happen. Those things also bring more population, more people, more crime. You are not going to stop the fact that juveniles in today, everyone is messed up. It's not just the kids from COVID, parents are messed up too, their focus can't be on their kids, therefore it falls down, right? So if you don't have the programs yet, you've gotta keep public safe. And the answer to that is keeping beds open. The answer to that is the Boy Scout rule of being prepared. That's great if you don't have to use those beds, that's awesome. But if the numbers are correct and it's a hundred and forty million dollars from eighty-seven, what's another three? Because I get if you put it to a public vote, the public would say, well, we want public safety. None of this is ever put to a public vote when it comes to public safety, and I think you'd get surprisingly different results from what is being voted on. Now, as Commissioner Friend has said before, your job is to have the facilities ready. Your job is to be prepared, right? So, what is your child worth? What was my daughter worth? What is her daughter or son worth? It's simple math, one forty-four, thirty-four, or fifty-four. Until the programs are there and they're working, it doesn't make any sense to close this one. And you've heard it from your own. Sandra came up here and told you what works in there. So yes, please collaborate, because coming to some of these, I just see things, people argue and they don't collaborate, nothing's getting done. Listen to the people, listen to the victims, listen to the juveniles who are telling you, well, you're just gonna let me out tomorrow, I'll do it again. Listen to them, because if not, the voters are gonna listen at the next ballot box time.
Time.
Louise Hummels, twenty-seven oh nine Dewey Avenue. I'm, uh, interested to hear what others are saying, but I, I wanna say what I'm, what I need to say, because Commissioner Kavanaugh is correct. There is a lot of things that were spoken, promised, advised, and the number one thing that we're here is that the, the services aren't ready for reducing the population. And the, the public was informed on that, that this was a shoddy, um, there was a shoddy planning by the reader, the reader's not here, and it's not gonna be here anymore. So I, I, I do think there's some sensationalism with this project, but I don't think Commissioner Kavanaugh is doing that. I think he sincerely understands the issues and has been telling his fellow commissioners on it. And, you know, there's three commissioners that are now on the board that weren't previously, and you guys didn't stop it. You could have stopped it. I think you were elected before the construction, before the permits were pulled or something like that. Basically, the space wasn't there, you didn't stop it. You, you, specifically, Mr., Commissioner Friend, you said this needs to, uh, happen because the decision was made to build this project. Uh, the youth component is a part of it, but the, uh, judges and the, uh, legal services are a big component of it. So it was, it was built, and I'm not gonna relegate that, but I think you guys need to take some, uh, responsibility for closing a lot of your committees. One of the first things that you did was to, um, close down the committees, and you don't have any ad hoc committees or any special committees. I think the last one that you put together was the Strategic Committee for the ARPA funding. So that would have been a forum, uh, to outline what needs to transpire for the, um, youth services to move, um, to separate the populations from, uh, the youth center. It is important that the felons and the, you know, the ones that are not felons be separated. And I think that's an important thing that, uh, needs to transpire with the, uh, the closing down of the current youth center, that, that space houses everybody. And, um, I, I don't know all the details, but I think that that's difficult for some of the youths to be in that environment. I ha, I have my notes here. But yeah, you, you guys have different populations of youths in, in that space, and that's one of the things that you, you would keep hearing. I think that a red flag is when youths are missing schools, the, the, going to school. Youth need to be supervised so that they don't, uh, plan and make
One minute.
uh, shoddy decisions, or bad decisions, excuse me, horrible decisions. So, I, you know, it's a complex matter, but I think a basic component is the youth being supervised. Why aren't the youths being supervised? Why are they being allowed to congregate and plan these things, uh, criminal activity? So the, the nonprofit services, the support that the youths can receive, that's an important part of this, and that's why, um, I think you have a good resolution before you, that, you know, Madam Chair and Commissioner Rogers, you want this to happen, but it just didn't pan out like you build it. you want this to happen, but it just didn't pan out like you build it. And that's why you're here. Thank you.
Thank you. Next.
Hi, my name is Tammy Parker, and I'm here for, to voice for my nephew, Mr. Casino Parker. Yes, that's his name. He was killed by a 14-year-old last Labor Day. My family has been through a lot. Mister was 28, and he was at a pool party with his kid, his little girl who's eight, and his wife. We really still don't know the whole concept of what had happened between a man and Mister that got into a fight. And Mister had no weapons on him. Mister fought him like man, punched him out. His kid, we had witnesses at the court. The 14-year-old had had the gun all day long showing it off. Him and his dad, Mister and his dad got into a fight. And the kid shot Mister twice in the back, in the back. That kid knew what he was doing. He had the gun on him all day long. His family was there. We still don't even know why the fight even happened. But this kid, we went to court a couple months ago, and the stuff that I seen, and the judge even, he was amazing. And he would tell me to leave because of the pictures they were going to show of my nephew laying on that table. And he was shot twice by this 14-year-old who took off running, disabled the gun, so he obviously knew what he was doing, and he hit the gun. They finally got the kid because witnesses showed the cops where the child was at and hiding. We went to court, and this kid didn't even get manslaughter charges on him. He got two felony charges, one for tampering with evidence, and I can't even remember what the other. But guess where he's at right now? Guess? He's at a group home in Lincoln. Now you tell me what's more important, a kid skipping school or a kid that murders somebody? And you tell me where he belongs? You need to, we need, we need to give these kids help, yes, but a group home? Come on, people. And guess what? Guess where I got to go? I believe it's on the 29th. I have, I'm going to go to court again to see if the kid gets to go home or if he gets to go back to the group home. What kind of punishment is that? A kid that murdered some, he murdered my nephew. And there's nothing, nothing that Nebraska can do to a 14-year-old. Come on, people. And it's just getting worse. And I have to tell you, I think Aaron Hanson, I think he's doing an amazing job from all, and he's trying to start us to get everything like it's supposed to be with protecting us people. I think we need to worry about these children, and we need to give them help, not put them in a group home. What is that going to do for them? Oh, we're going to go to a movie tonight. He just killed somebody. And you're going to let him just be free and go out to dinner and hang out with his friends? And then, like I said, our family, which I forgot to mention, his grandma who raised him, a month after he was killed, she died. And you can't tell me that wasn't from a broken heart. Our family has been through hell and back. And then for me to have to sit there and look at pictures, which I didn't want to see of my nephew laying there with gunshots in his back. He was leaving. He was going to get his family. He went to go get, he was getting his little eight-year-old seeing him bleeding to death. Now you tell me that's okay? I think we need to get together and we need to figure out what we need to do to help these children out. And I want you all to close your eyes and just imagine what we've been through. And imagine seeing your loved one, your nephew, your son, anybody laying there with gunshot in the wound. And I do want to tell you one thing before I leave. I think the police officers, there was one police officer that stayed with Mister the whole entire time trying to perform CPR on him. Mister didn't die by himself because that police officer was there. And I really wish you would consider, you can't, you got to leave these places open, and you got to get the right kids in the right place to get the help, not in a group home. If you want to sit there and spend money on a lake and orbit buses and stuff, but what is that going to do for us? You need to help our community. We got to keep these places open and give the kids the right care and attention they need. I thank you all very much, and I'm very sorry for your loss, and I'm sorry for your losses as well. But please really, really think about the story of Mister, Mister Parker.
Thank you.
Thank you.
I'm sorry for your loss.
My name's Tiffany Pele, and I live in Omaha. And I come from a different point because these people that lost their loved ones, my kid is going to be the person doing that to their families because my kid has been failed by your system in place right now. Five years ago, I made my first call into the juvenile court to get help with my daughter, who was a runner. And you know what? It took forever before they even detained her for a day. In that time, my daughter's been sex trafficked. She's been through every placement in Omaha and outside of Omaha because yes, we do send our kids out of state to detain them because you guys do have that youth center open, but guess what? You're very limited on who you put there. You don't want, they don't want kids there because they want to keep their numbers down. My daughter has been failed every step of the way, and I had so much to say today, but I listened to these ladies talk, and I'm like, is this going to be my future? Sitting in a courtroom with my kid, listening to the families of the, you know, of the victims of whatever my kid's done or whoever my kid was with? You can't close youth center. I grew up in the system here in Douglas County. Actually, when they made the building that they have now, I transferred over. And it wasn't fun, but it kept me safe. I wasn't trafficked. I wasn't able to go out and hurt anybody else. And I grew up and I became a successful person in life. And that's why I called the system to put my daughter in there was for help. And all it's done is make it worse. And it's not just my kid. I can tell you I've connected with a lot of parents, and it's terrible. And if you guys think it's going to get better in five years, it's not. All you're doing is securing beds for your prisons because that's where my daughter's going to go. And as a mom, it feels like shit to say that about your own kid that you fought for. But all the kids that have murdered their families, that wasn't the first time they committed a crime. They were let go.
Thank you. Next.
I'll be real short, Don. Thank you. Larry Store, 5015 Lafayette Avenue, 68132. I haven't suffered the pain of these ladies and a lot of mothers and fathers. But when I grew up, I did something wrong, somebody found out about it, and it was reported. I might be marched down the street by my ear. My dad might take me into the garage and use the leather belt. But we didn't get by with things because everybody was involved. And because they were, we knew what the standards were. Yeah, not everybody did. But I also have a grandson that's been in group homes most of his life. Your group homes series do not work, ladies and gentlemen. They're a place to hide things and a place to rest, maybe. But they don't work largely because staff often is not really involved. Now, for quite a few years, I've gone to visit or transport. And I've often seen staff sitting around on their damn phones, not even interested in saying hi, goodbye, thank you, or whatever. And therapists that don't want to talk to you, you can't be involved because you're not the guardian. Excuse me, I'm a grandfather. That's one of the problems wrong here. Is the professionals and the privacy laws to protect them from making mistakes or whatever. Don't let you be involved. Excuse me, I know my grandson better than a therapist does. Bet you. I bet they know better about your kids on the street than you do. But so you're so busy, you have to pay professionals. Those professionals are maybe clear out of town. They make their money writing these papers, these things, these programs, devising them, and coming and asking you for the money to try it. How many programs have failed in the last five years? Maybe not complete failure, but why are the numbers up? You must be barking up the wrong tree with group homes and programs. You need a different way. Maybe trying to understand the minds of kids, but also parents like me and grandparents like me that pay the taxes. And maybe have to move out of Omaha because of things like programs. Group homes, by the way, there's group homes starting to pop up around me. We don't often hear about them. It's not explained. We don't know what kind of group homes they are. There is a home program for juvenile justice, I understand, but we tried to get a definition of what that is, and we couldn't get the definition. Present in that same meeting was the Douglas County Sheriff. Thank you.
Just to let the people know that I do see your hands that are on Zoom. We'll get to you as soon as those in the chamber are done.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Good morning. You know, I'm Don Klein, Douglas County Attorney. And first of all, let me just say that I respect every single one of you and all the work that you do. And I know that they're really good intentions that all of you have in trying to solve problems and very difficult situations. Unfortunately, I make difficult decisions every single day. Sometimes I don't sleep at night trying to figure out what to do with juveniles that are involved in very violent crime. I look at police reports. My chief deputy and I get calls in the middle of the night. We go to scenes. We see the devastation that takes place. I have children. I have grandchildren. I coached youth athletics, both basketball, baseball, and football for 25 years. I care the utmost about young people. I have 16 of my lawyers in the juvenile court system because I believe that we can make a difference in young people's lives if we need to. But the thing that I've seen over the years is that I have never seen in my, all my years as a county attorney or when I was in private practice, the number of young people involved in very, very violent activities. I met with Alicia Sexton about her son who was murdered by a 13-year-old in a home invasion in front of her. I've seen a 13-year-old, another first-degree murder case who killed another 13-year-old over by Hanscom Park recently. I've seen a 17-year-old who walks into a clerk in South Omaha at a quick shop. The clerk puts his hands up, and the young person shoots him in the chest and kills him. I could go on and on and on about those examples of very violent crimes caused by guns and juveniles. And so it's very difficult to try and figure out what can I, what do I do as a county attorney? Charging them as adults, letting them go to juvenile court? But I see this thing about detention, and I say to myself, and I talk to parents, I talk to victims' families, I talk to parents of youth who commit crimes, I talk to foster parents, and they tell me, Don, there needs to be consequences. And at least initially, that these young people, sometimes they need to be detained for their own safety and for the public safety, and that's what this is about, public safety. We need the beds. It's that simple. I mean, that's the, that's the problem here. Let's talk common sense. We have a facility that has 54 beds. We have 74 people in the youth center currently. We can't do it. And I don't think that we should try and do everything we can. And that's what I hear recently is from judges and probation people that we're trying to push down the numbers so to make this, you know, square peg fit into a round hole, I guess, the example I would give. And I see the ads that I don't know who puts those ads on, and I don't think it's the county, every day, all the time about we shouldn't detain juveniles. We have to detain juveniles. We have to detain them for at least some time until we can figure out what to do with them for their own safety and for public safety. And we need the beds to be able to do that. And so it's very simple, I think, right now that we need to have the beds to be able to detain people, young people. We have serious crime issues with regard to violent crime and juveniles. Those young people need to be detained, at least until we can sort it out, figure out what to do with them, or they need to be charged as adults. And that's what we do, and we make, like I said, we make difficult, heart-wrenching decisions
One minute.
every day with regard to young people. Not an easy task for anybody that's involved. And I appreciate your work. I appreciate your intentions. But it's very simple here. From a public safety standpoint, we need the beds. The other thing that I'll add very quickly is I, besides hearing this lady talk today, I've heard from several people who've said their young person, juvenile, was human trafficked because they weren't detained. They ran, and they ran, and they ran again. And they begged for help, parents did, and said, I need my child to be detained. I need him to get help. I need him to be safe. And what happened? They're human trafficked. That's another issue, a gigantic issue that's part of this problem. Thank you. I'd be happy to answer any questions at any time from any of you. I appreciate your work.
Next.
Douglas County Sheriff Aaron Hanson. You know, this is valuable public policy discussion, and I really do appreciate every member of this commission having this discussion. It's important. Every perspective you're hearing today is valuable. And, you know, I want to go back to the very first young lady that spoke at the very beginning. Almost everybody has the same outcomes in mind. We all want what's good and what's safe for not only our community, but for these young people themselves. Where we disagree is how to get there. You know, I've heard, I've heard today and I've heard in the past, people say, well, some people just lock them up. They want, lock them up. Just lock them up. Well, starting today, when I hear someone say that, especially in a position of authority or publicly, I'm going to ask who they're talking about. I haven't heard that. I've never said lock them up. People on my side of the discussion has never said lock them up. And honestly, I think that that type of a comment cheapens the discussion. It cheapens the sacrifices of the families in the room. What people really are talking about is we need capacity. We need options. Because you're right, when a young person enters the juvenile system, eventually they'll be out, especially if they successfully discharge. But we need options in real time. Our challenge right now is a math problem. We don't have enough viable alternatives to detention in Douglas County. That's a fact. That is a fact, whether we like it or not. That's a fact. It's part of the math problem. Also adding to that math problem is those alternatives to detention in Douglas County, which we know are few and far between, are currently getting utilized more and more by juveniles outside of Douglas County. That's a fact. Last year, there was 150 juveniles utilizing local services in Douglas County. It's 137 juveniles a year to date. We're on pace to double last year's rate. That means less potential for our youth in those same services. And why is it difficult for our youth to get into those services? Because oftentimes, our youth have more severe crimes and more dangerous behaviors, and these individual services, these service providers have the ability to pick and choose who they're going to provide services to. 33% of our youth that come in and out of the youth center will commit a new offense and find their way back into the youth center within six months. That's staggering recidivism. Imagine what that number looks like in 12 months. It's based on 2022 data. We talk about transitioning kids out of detention, and I agree. Detention is the last place we want to be able to place a juvenile offender if we can help it. And sometimes we can't. We heard a lot of stories about why. But also lacking in our scheme is that transitional infrastructure. There's a study out there, the Blue Cross Blue Shield did, that talks about transition from PRTFs, psychiatric residential treatment facilities out into the public. I think Boystown had some part of that research as well. And it shows if you don't have a careful transition from a residential secure facility out into public, the failure rate is astounding. Well, that's essentially what we have today in Douglas County as we try to transition high-risk youth from detention out into traditional community-based services that are meant for lower-level kids. high-risk youth from detention out into traditional community-based services that are meant for lower-level kids. That infrastructure, that transitional infrastructure doesn't exist. Why is that important? There's a well-known youth shelter in our community that we have been sending a lot of kids to lately, high-risk kids, to get them out of the youth center. In 2022 and so far in 2023, 40 kids have ran from that very well-known shelter. I'm not going to name them. It's not their fault. They have to abide by the court order. In another well-known group home that just opened, we've already had one young man run, who my deputies are looking for right now with concerning gun charges as his underlying charges. It's not as easy as some people think. But thank you for this thoughtful public policy discussion, and thank you for being focused on better outcomes, both for these youth and for our community.
Anyone else in the chamber wishing to speak on this subject?
Morning. Paul Fileman, excuse me, 317 Clear Creek Tribe, UTN, Nebraska. I wanted to just kind of, I've been doing kind of community advocacy since I retired from work as a mental health therapist and just kind of looking at the community and seeing a number of things and some of the violence and things going on, trying to look at where some of these things might be coming from. And history is a big deal. Excuse me. I spent the last few years just getting to know people in the community and talking to some of you folks and so forth. And then my dad, who's 97, and he needed some help, so I spent the last year with him. He passed in April. But I spent the last year with him, and he taught me a lot about some history. He grew up in Hamburg, Germany, and he spent a lot of time the last year reading about experiences that people had in his community because he was Ashkenazi Jew by bloodline and had to get out of Germany, just barely made it out and came here. But the experiences of what he talked about and what the emotional trauma of being isolated as that particular racial group and the things that happened to them, one of his aunts didn't get out. She ended up in a concentration camp. He made it out just barely and then ended up actually going back and fighting against Germany. But what I see is historically, the way that the Nazis dealt with the Jews, the people with Jewish heritage, was similar to the ways that we have dealt with blacks in the United States since slavery. And it just keeps reoccurring and reoccurring. In fact, Hitler used some of the techniques that were used against blacks in his own regime. In the United States, it went from slavery and then it moved into giving them 40 mules or 40 acres and a mule, but then that went away. Then we went into segregation, equal, separate but equal. Because there was this thing about the Jews in Germany and the blacks in the United States, they're both seen as tainted, less than human. That's the key variable that you have to look at in both Germany and the United States. And then it just continued, the Will Brown lynching and the violence that occurred. All the migration of people came from the South came because of thousands of lynchings in the South. So they came up here. Then we have this lynching of Will Brown in North Omaha. They get isolated in North Omaha. And what did they do? Preston Love speaks about it eloquently. They took lemons and they made a shitload of lemonade out of it. They, if you, how many have read Twenty-Fourth and Glory? Anybody? Show me a hand. If you haven't read Twenty-Fourth and Glory, it talks about what the community was able to do, even being segregated, isolated economically and so forth, and they were given that opportunity. And then after that occurred, they were doing really well in North Omaha, then the Vivian Strong murder. If you don't know about Vivian Strong, that's a terrible trauma to the community that set off riots. And the population was then isolated in North Omaha. They couldn't buy houses. Bob Gibson couldn't buy a house west of 72nd Street. You couldn't swim in Peony Park. And so segregation was the way to deal with blacks in the community of Omaha. And then what happened? There's, you got kids and families, if you haven't seen the movie Out of Omaha. There's three kids involved in that family. Two of them got out of the North Omaha situation. I sent you each an email with a link to that and a link to the trailer on the movie Divisible, which chronicles a lot of this history. And what I'm trying to get at is, we can't, you know, we have to be able to see the forest for the trees. If we don't, St. Paul has a thing now where they are actually have a committee where they're looking at reparations, rehabilitation. It's a Marshall Plan. It's what we did with Germany to help rebuild Germany and what happened to the Jews. They have a Marshall Plan in St. Paul. There's a commission that consults with both the city council and county commissioners about how to rebuild the community. If we don't rebuild and support North Omaha by giving them the power, they knew how to build it in 1940. They know how to rebuild their own community now. You just need to get people with resources, give them access, give input to the committee. Otherwise, you're going to just continue to see this. I go to the prisons all the time. My last thing I'll tell you. I sat down in one week, one guy, two lifers, one guy, he was in for life. His grandson was just murdered here. Now, he's dealing with that. The other guy, I sat next to his son. They're both in a support group that I work in. He's devastated. His son is in, his son is in the same prison. So that's what we're looking at if we don't make changes.
Thank you, Paul. Next.
Hi, my name is Nicole Leclair. I come from down the road in Bellevue. But I've been attending these meetings for five years. I wasn't going to come today because I'm worn out. But here I am, watching from home. I zoom down here. So this is the albatross around the neck of Douglas County and Omaha, downtown Omaha. The money has been spent, as we were concerned, before one child and their family has been helped. Five years of this and still no programs. The best that I can determine of your programs from going to meetings upstairs in room 903, again, I want to encourage everyone watching here, listening here, or on Zoom or YouTube to go to those and attend those meetings because that's where you really find out what is going on. So around the neck of downtown Omaha, an albatross, the downtown kids jail. I know you don't like it when we call it that. You have all kinds of nicer names, euphemisms for it, but that's what it is. We've watched the magical thinking and names that you've all been trying to create over this for five years, and it does not change what it is. The best that I have seen that you have is sending dangerous kids back home to environments that led them to where they are. And most recently, I've seen money, $500,000. Of the $2,000 that the county has received go to a connector service network that already exists in our community, is not a program. You just approved that $500 for the Bridge Family Resource Network, which again, is not a program. Suzy Buffett and Sherwood Foundation promised the county $10 million. I have a copy of the letter from five years ago. If you would build this albatross, $5 million for the building and $5 million for programs. The only program again is a connector service, not a program. I say say the right name. Say Suzy Buffett, Sherwood Foundation. Say Mike Giani, Georgia Chola, from Burlington Capital. Say Bruce Carpenter from HGR. I've listened to the people today with their, I'm very sorry, for their experiences of violence in their families that I believe is on your shoulders and you're going to wear them in your hearts. I also see the focus beginning to happen, I'm going to jump for a minute, to mental health for kids. I believe that seriously is important. But the kids are here because the adults need mental health. I know this is a different topic, but we need to also focus on that. Thank you very much. I'm glad I came down.
Anyone else in the chamber wishing to speak to the board? If not, I will move to Zoom, and we have a hand up from a Linda Richards.
Good morning, Commissioners.
Good morning.
Thank you. Linda Richards, 9135 Polk Street, Omaha. First want to say I apologize for not being able to be there physically with you, but do appreciate this opportunity to speak via Zoom. First want to say that I can empathize with you as Commissioners. I know every single one of you sitting there, and I hope that you all know that my understanding of the tough position that you sit in as elected officials and genuinely do believe that you are there doing the best work that you can possibly do. Having been a now-retired school board member for 25 years, I know the difficulty that that seat feels, the weight that feels today in making difficult decisions. I did that for 25 years in this community for all of our kids, and it was tough at times to always understand that you were making the right decisions. But I focused on my why. I always focused on being a part of the solution, not exacerbating the problem. So I empathize with you. I can only sympathize with Alicia, Amber, Tammy, and Tiffany who spoke prior to this. So I sympathize with you for your losses and your struggles. There, but by the grace of God, I would have joined them today in being able to empathize with them. On July 11th, my son was carjacked on his way to work in the morning. Very, very difficult situation, never having experienced crime in our family, directly being a victim of crime. He survived. He did the right thing. He gave the car up. He told the perpetrator his life wasn't worth a car. I have subsequently found out, as we've gone through this process, Commissioners, of the involvement, who was involved, what the background was. Terrible, terrible situation for that young man as well. But at the end of the day, so that you all understand my reason for being here today is because I'm here as Linda Richards' mom. I had to listen to my son tell me a story about a gun shoved in his face and his fear for his life. And to come to find out that that was a young man that was committing that crime that morning, who was holding that gun, had an ankle monitor on him, and had no way of denying that he was present there because he was currently under monitoring. I found out many other things since the date of that crime that sickened me all the way around because all of our kids in this community deserve better, and we've got to do better. And so I'm not going to chastise. I'm not going to tell you what you need to do or what you don't need to do. I'm going to come here today and tell you, I am here. I am raising my hand, and I will be involved and I will help however I can, as I have for the last 25 years as a local elected school board member, concerned about all kids because they all matter. My son matters. The young man who did this matters. But we have to figure this out. We, I appreciate the aspiration. I really do. What we aspire to be, we are not there yet. And as a result, we are not ready to close this facility until we are ready to do that. So give yourself more time. Take a breath. I've been there. Allow yourself to make a new decision, the next decision today. And so I really encourage you and would ask for your support in this resolution, but I also offer my support and help in any way that I can bring it. Thank you, Commissioners.
Thank you, Linda. Anyone else wishing to speak either in the chamber or on Zoom? All right. With that, I...
Alicia Sexton again at 1607 Laird Street.
Sorry, ma'am, you already spoke.
Oh, I'm sorry. I wasn't aware. I seen the other guy talk several times, so I didn't know.
No, that's on each item, not just the same. Sorry about that. Thank you, though, for being here. Commissioner Rogers?
Wait, wait for you to start. Okay. Let me, let me start. By saying to the mothers, the relatives, everybody else that have come up with those situations, let me say to the mothers, all those relatives, and everybody that have come up with the situations, there's nothing that could be said for your loss. I haven't experienced it personally. I've seen it. I don't know if I need to experience it to feel it. I got two sons myself, and it's a thought that any parent could have, and that any parent should think it could happen. I understand what your issues are because I don't think anybody is saying they don't want accountability. But I'm going to say this in the most respectful way, trying to get that. I understand everything you're going through. I can feel your emotion. But the emotion of those stories are not all the facts on what we're getting today because I appreciate the fact that you want to come here and voice your opinions to this body. But what you're talking about is not in this body's preview and not accountable to this body. What I'm saying and I mean by that is the fact that we're only here to talk about the transition of a facility. And nobody is advocating for any kid to be released that is dangerous. Nobody. The only thing that is being asked for is for a kid that is sitting in there 60 to 90 days who's supposed to have a service to get the service paid for. By law, detention cannot be used as a placement. That's what we're saying. I'm asking my colleagues that are still in the persuadable realm. You don't have to do this resolution today. Here is why. In May 23rd, we passed a resolution that started August 1st that prescribed how those numbers should be reduced. We are ahead of that schedule in regards to what those numbers should be reduced to, and if we adhere to that which we passed, we're still on track to get there. I am telling you, in my opinion, that this resolution bounds it for a couple of reasons. One, last time we came, it was 52. Now it's 54. There is not a certified practice. It is custom to try to operate at 80%. And it's not because it is written in a law or it is prescribed that a facility has to operate at 80%. It's because that's best to get in and we got an issue with girls. But we're working on the issue with girls, and hopefully we will have that solved to where that is not an issue. The point was made about one time being at 89 of the 96 operating capacity. That 86 was somewhere like 96%. And what I'm saying is, the 80 doesn't have a magic number. I mean, I think it's ideal, but no facility around operates in an ideal fashion. With the, and the point of this time is the other piece meant about six months. I don't understand that. If we were to hold a number for six months at 54, you can move in in a week with 54. Why would you hold it for six months? The plan that we have right now and that you passed gets it down to 55 people in December, and you were going to make that move in the transition. I am telling you, I sit in a meeting every week where people are there looking for solutions, and I talk to judges and I talk to probation. What I heard in a meeting a week ago is probation saying they are working on services. There are kids from other counties sitting in services in Douglas County, and we can't even get our kids in those services because the state needs to decrease their capacity. That is one of the issues. So, I mean, I feel where everybody's coming, and I agree and want to be there on it, and we're working on some things right now. But if you pass this resolution, you're limiting what's in place right now to operate and get there. And I'll yield for who's next, and I'll take my other five after the next person.
I usually as chair wait till the end, but I'll go ahead and go myself. And I was going to bring up the May 23rd resolution as well, but before I do that, I know me saying this isn't going to matter to those sitting in the audience because they've already made up their mind about me, but, and I've never, I don't even know you. I've never talked to you, but I do. I am sorry for your loss.
People come to this podium thinking that...
People come to this podium thinking that we have no heart. We have a heart, and that's why we're doing what we're doing. I spent time with three youth that stole cars. I asked my fellow commissioners, have you? Did you hear their stories? And no way is that condoning what they did, but it's understanding what they did. Those three are in a program called Reconnect, Inc. They have successfully graduated from that program, to have jobs. And that's what our emphasis and hope is for our youth, that we're able to turn their lives around. Now, are there going to be some that we can turn around? Yes, of course. We're not, we're not ignorant of that fact. But we have providers in this community that have stepped up to provide services to these youth who are troubled. Now, what I think is, I don't care how long you put a youth anywhere. They're going to get out eventually. And if we don't start talking about the root causes, and Paul kind of talked about some of them, in communities, we're going to continue to see the recidivism. If we don't do something about guns in this community, we're going to keep seeing gun crimes. So there has been no talk from, and Commissioner Rogers and I seem to be the targets to throw the hand grenades and shoot the guns at. There has been no talk ever of closing that facility. We just said on May 23rd, we passed a resolution that laid out a, a transition of numbers of kids we needed to get to to go to the new facility. If we operated two facilities today, it's not going to cost us anymore. We did a staffing analysis. We could run both facilities. But if we want everything to stay the same, it can stay the same. But what we were looking at was trying to make things better for our kids and our families. And that's what we continue to do through trying to find providers in the community. And have some failed? Yes, some have failed, our children. But that's not for lack of trying. That's not for lack of heart. That is for lack of whatever reason the child was not able to be rehabilitated. But that's what our juvenile system is, is a rehabilitative system. And if, if we need to change that, then we need to change it at the legislature because that's what it does, is it tries to rehabilitate. And again, I know there are some kids we are not going to rehabilitate. But for those that we have a chance to and to provide an opportunity for, and to have them become productive citizens rather than going into the adult system, that's what we want to focus on. And so, again, we had our May 23rd resolution that went till the end of the year. It didn't say close it tomorrow. It didn't say open the doors to the new facility tomorrow. We took a step back and we said, let's transition, and here's how we're going to do it. So, you know, again, it doesn't matter. Everybody's made up their minds where they are with what Commissioner Rogers and I have done for the last 20 years on this. But I can sit here and tell you that I do things for the good of the people, for the good of the children, and the good of their families, which ultimately will be the good of our community. And I'll go down believing that forever. Commissioner Rogers?
And let me say that, you know, I, I settle my peace with the Lord on this. I believe there's definitely should be accountability, but, you know, if the people were thinking I'm not in the right direction, then I'll live with that decision. But like I said, every week, I sit in a meeting on 50th and Ames where people are sitting in there trying to work on solutions. They are not saying they don't want accountability, but they're not saying they want people detained that justly don't need to be. Let me talk about COVID and a few other things. My colleagues were right that COVID changed it. But when you talk about some of the issues that happened with COVID, COVID is behavioral health, mental health. Science proves that sitting in a detention center only makes that worse. So what we are trying to do is put things in place so that can be solved in an early amount. People talked about the cost of running two facilities. That facility sitting over there unoccupied is going to run $600,000 a year, unoccupied. 50K a month. You're already paying for two facilities. So if you're talking about the cost, that, that's the issue there. Here, I mean, there's a list of services that we're working on to some degree. We can go from here to there. The issue's talked about the 80%. There's an agreement trying to be worked on right now with Sarpy County to take that, for them to take our girls and for us to continue to take their boys, which is a solution there really for the 80% piece because your credit, your point to the credit of girls is a real legit issue. That's on the table to be solved. There is a conversation next week that's going to be in the Child and Youth Services Committee about trying to beef up the Juvenile Assessment Center to have some accountability to those kids that are taking cars and need to have the service immediately. But note, if you want to help out there in the community, you have to put the word out to the parents that they're going to have to accept this service. It is voluntary. You want to do some change of law and make some of this stuff mandatory because we can't put them on there without their permission. And I want to reiterate again, because I can't say this enough, about the understanding of where these parents and everybody are coming with these issue with kids. I hear you. And I feel for you. And I hate that your emotions have to be opened up every time coming up here with this, coming to us when we're not it. Because I'm going to tell you right now, the comparison that they can tell you to come here and come to us, and that we're letting people loose, and that the issue is on us, is just like me saying that they are to blame for the gun violence because they should be keeping all these illegal guns off the street. There's nothing they can do about that. And I would never put that in that court. So the only thing I'm saying is be fair with the issue. To my colleagues that are still persuadable, please. If we get to the end of this in November and we, we need more time, I will join with you with a resolution to keep it open an extra month. But we're not there yet. We are set out on this path. And if we, as a board, hold the state accountable to what we have done here, we get there. Kids are sitting there 60 to 90 days. And I'm telling you and repeating you again, they are kids. They know it, and they've said it, and they know they need to change it. There's a meeting I'm missing right now with the State Juvenile Detention Alternative Initiative because they're talking about it. If you pass this resolution, you take the onus off the people whose role it is. You talk about roles in the system. Have people be accountable for their roles and the services. A kid from another county taking up a bed in Douglas County that we can sit in, that's an issue. And that's not ours to be solved. The longer you let that facility there, the longer you hide the issues in the system. Make them deal with it. Make them deal with it. There's no way on earth that we would let that happen to us to some degree. If there was a service we needed fulfilled, nobody would take that up for us. Make them deal with the service piece and address the issue with the nonviolent kids that are in there waiting for a service that the law says cannot sit in there for a service. That is all I'm asking. Don't pass this today. We still have time. And again, I tell you, if we are not there, I will join with you in extending it till we get there. But we hold true to this. We get there. Thank you.
Commissioner Boyle?
Thanks. My big question about this resolution is what, if I may ask Commissioner Rogers, what does this resolution do that changes the course? I mean, I understand the 54, to be honest, I'm not fond of the 54 youth cutoff. At the same time, I don't see, I'm just asking, I guess, what, what in this specific resolution to say that we don't run, want to run two facilities? We, the, the capacity of the 54 does bother me, I'll admit that. So what, what bothers you? I know there's a point in there about rescinding the May 23rd resolution because that was the one that held the feet to the fire for probation to really make a strong effort to, to, to decrease the numbers. So, but I, if we pass this resolution, I, I feel like we're just, it's, we're just not quite holding the feet to the fire quite as much. At the same time, I feel like the same things will be being done behind the scenes to get the programming up to, up to par and to just take, take our time to really do it right. What's, so, please, please answer, yes.
I feel this bond in our hands because, one, again, let's talk about the cost of running two facilities. You're running two facilities now. It's ready. Every day is ready. You don't just let a facility sit idle. There's air conditioning, there's heat, there's everything that's else come with it. So you're going to run two facilities now. You know, we have a lot of physical conservatives, you know, we're not just poo-pooing 600K a year. That's what it will be. And I think the resolution has something there about 2025. There's going to be costs with that. But the other thing about the six months is the point I tried to, to do. What's magic with the six months? You get a report every week, and you see how volatile that number is. Nobody's doubting that. But if we, if you were to, if we were to get the number down to, if we were to have 54 kids for five months, three weeks, and six days, and then we get a number, we reset the clock all the way back? When the resolution right now, we're due to be there on December the 1st. And then you're going to take, give yourself four weeks to the first to move in? Why do you need six months to move 54 kids in? If you hit, if, if you hit the number to move into a place, you move. You move. And so that's why I think it is an issue. You don't, you don't need that.
So you think the 54 is the issue?
I think, I think it's an issue because we already have a resolution in place to get it down to 55. That's why I think. And I'm thinking if we let that go, if we get to this point in December, I promise you, if we get to this point in December and you're not comfortable, we can delay, we can hold off a month.
So what does Commissioner Garcia, Commissioner Friend, how would you feel about changing that number? Just take out 54 and just say matches the operational capacity of the Youth and Family Support Center?
I think if you don't define what you are intending as operational capacity, then you lose the substance of the matter. Then what is operational capacity then? So you have to define it. Otherwise, there's no substance to the matter.
That's, to be honest, that's the issue I have with this resolution as well, is the fact that there's a digit in there. I like most everything else about it. So, but that, that's making my decision more challenging. Any, any other comments on the 54? Mr. Friend, since you were.
Oh, okay, okay. Thank you, Madam Chair. I was asked a question. No, I, if, if we're up to me, I would, I'd remove the numbers. Because I'm trying to be consistent with where I've been in my, in my thought process. We don't control the numbers. I, I've said this three times in these meetings. I hope people are listening. We do not control it. We can try, we don't. I don't even think that language is necessary. I think we just, I, I think, I think we could stop by just leaving this open and opening up opportunities for us. That's my opinion.
Is it possible, then, for me to amend the resolution to ask that the 54 be removed?
If you did, I would second it.
Okay, I would like to make that amendment if possible.
Second.
We, for clarity, who made the motion?
You don't have a motion.
I didn't think I had a motion.
Oh, okay, never mind.
Well, I move, I move the resolution. Is everybody done speaking?
Well, not yet. I mean, I'll go, they're second to the motion.
Second.
And for time purposes, I have one more time to speak as well. And I would ask my colleagues again to go back to the May. I would ask that you go back to the May 23rd resolution that basically is doing what you're asking for. And we can revisit it. We have time. So I'm not really sure, and again, I haven't had any conversations with anybody other than here at the board meeting to figure out what the purpose of it is. And especially if we take out the 54 because, again, that's in the May 23rd resolution that gets us all where we want to be to open up the new facility. And so I would again ask, I, I would just ask, you know, I think Commissioner Rogers has done a, a great job with the Child and Youth Services Committee and the time and effort he puts in on a daily basis on these issues with people in the community to try and solve the issues that we, again, honor the May 23rd resolution and not bring this one forward until such time that we see we're not going to make the May 23rd resolution come to fruition.
Chair Borges, and I apologize. I, my, Teresa York County Attorney's Office, my button requesting to speak is not working. I don't think, I'm not sure if.
I see you now.
Oh, it is there? Okay, very good. And I believe there may be others in the back row that wanted to say something, so I just make the board aware of that. Since the board is considering amendments, I do have one that's a procedural issue that I wanted to raise for the board. The last paragraph of the resolution talks about rescinding a, a prior motion, but that is, that was not on the agenda specifically. What the agenda request item talks about is the, is that not opening the youth, youth, not opening the new youth center for a certain period of time. And so I, I think it would be more prudent to have the rescission on as a specific item and vote it on separately. That's what we do, rather than having it embedded in another resolution. So what I'm saying is, for the last, therefore be it resolved, you could put a period after youth and strike everything thereafter, or you could strike the entire be, be it further resolved. And I can answer questions if that was, if there are any.
Okay. So there is a motion and a second for this resolution. Do the makers of the motion agree to have the be it further resolved, removed from the resolution, and then placed as a separate resolution back on the agenda at a later date?
I, I confirm.
Commissioner Garcia?
Just procedurally, was the motion to amend actually motioned and actually seconded? Or no? Okay.
Not yet.
As far as striking the 54?
Not, you can do it. Now, we didn't have a motion on the original.
There was a motion and seconded by Friend for that.
No, well, there was, but it wasn't, we didn't have a, a base motion.
Oh, got it. Okay, thank you.
So the makers of the motion, do you agree to have the be it further resolved removed from this resolution? The last, the last one and then brought back at a later date?
Yes.
Okay. Just the last one? The, would be stricken, right? And brought back. And did you say somebody else wanted to?
I'm not positive, but there might be another speaker in the back row. I'll let them dress that if they wish to. I apologize. I thought I saw someone else hitting their button frantically like I was.
All right. So with that, there is a motion and a second on the resolution, but striking the last be it further resolved. That's the only change at this point. So you want a motion to amend it to remove the 54?
Second.
All right. We will now open discussion on removing the 54. Commissioner Garcia?
Yeah, just, well, again, I'm, I think that if you remove the definition of what we are saying is operational capacity, then you're losing the essence of the resolution to a large extent. Moreover, technically, you would have to address the first now therefore. Moreover, technically, you would have to address the first now therefore because it then refers back to the parameter that you just listed in the whereas that has the number 54. So, if you're gonna amend, you have to make sure it's cohesive with the rest of the resolution. So that is out there. But again, in reference to defining 54 here, which is really actually what's supposed to be 52, there was a miscalculation at the beginning. So 54 is really a, a friendly gesture to, to keep it slightly higher and was the original intention. This definition here actually says we have to actually hit 54 kids in detention and stay there for six months so that we see that we're not just gonna spike up back to 70 or whatever the case may be, that the actual ecosystem of juvenile justice and detention specifically is at a new norm and a new average where we're at safely 54 or less, including boys and girls. I have not been asked if I'm okay with sending our girls to other jurisdictions. I'm not okay with that. Our girls are our girls, we need to take care of them. So, I am against this amendment. I think the essence needs to stay in the resolution so that, again, we tangibly actually hit 54 and sustain that to know that we're safely at a lower number before we start transitioning. Yes, the resolution in May set benchmarks to get to 55 in December by somehow removing or reducing five kids per month. That is a benchmark, that's a goal versus a tangible. This is tangible, we have to actually hit it, we actually, we have to actually sustain it first. Not just have a goal that hopefully we'll get to 55 in December and hopefully we'll sustain that 55 moving forward. No, that's the, that's the key difference, that's why I'm against the amendment and keeping what is stated in the resolution currently. Thank you.
Commissioner Kavanaugh?
Thank you. I have a question, Kim, maybe you can help us with this. Not having a jail standards occupancy permit, which allows us to put children in there, not a city of Omaha occupancy permit as some would have you think. Not, that jail standards occupancy permit, like building permits, does it say X number of kids on the occupancy permit is the capacity? Like a building permit would say?
I have never, I haven't seen what the new one would look like, Commissioner, I do not know.
I don't know if Mr. Alexander's here, he has an up and running occupancy permit from jail standards, could you help us with that maybe? This may be academic, is what I'm saying, is if we have an occupancy permit limit, that's it. You're not gonna be able to put any more kids in there than you can put in there. Mr. Alexander, do you understand the question?
Uh, yeah, Brad Alexander, Superintendent Douglas County Youth Center. So the certificate of occupancy that would come from Nebraska Jail Standards would not address capacity. All it would address is meeting Nebraska's minimum jail standards for juvenile detention facilities.
So for instance, at the current Douglas County Youth Center, which you run, and I apologize, you not being included in this discussion today up till now, is there anything like that, the number of kids that you can legally put in the Douglas County Youth Center?
We have, our capacity is actually 132 beds, and that's, that's with Pria. We've reduced staff to allow for 96 beds. If we were to go, and we have, 89, heck, there was a time in 2007 where we were at 217 kids, and, but our facility right now meets standards to be able to double bunk each of the, the living units.
Okay, and for some reason, 96 kids showed up on your doorstep, you could accommodate 96 kids?
We would, it would just become a staffing issue and not a capacity issue.
So that in effect would be your operational capacity, is that correct?
We have, I mean, we have 132 beds at the current facility. And so theoretically, if we had the staffing necessary, I mean, the ratios are one to eight during the day and the evenings, one to 16 overnight. So if we had the staffing necessary to do that, we could accommodate that.
Sure, that's theory. In practice, practically, with your staff today, what can you operationally accommodate at the youth center? What's the number, if you know?
Well, we, we've implemented the transition team a while ago, so that adjusted it a little bit. But I would, I would say that 96 beds and then we have been, and I understand what Commissioner Rogers is saying about the 80%, but when we add staff, we're able to increase that and, and I mean, I mean, I wish I was here and I could, I could say something that everybody was gonna agree with, and I know that's not the position.
I'm sorry, I'm sorry, Mr. Alexander, I'm here at 96 beds.
Yeah.
Okay, if you had to, okay. In this new facility, with all of the numbers that we've heard, it, it appears that that number would be 52 or 54, is that about right?
The standard is 80%. And, and that's a, that's a operational capacity. That's, when you hit 80% and you're dealing with different classifications and you're dealing with different, different genders, I mean, at 80% is when you start feeling like you're at capacity, to be honest with you.
Okay, and that would be 54 beds at the...
52, yeah.
52, okay. So that would be operational capacity, and maybe operational capacity means 52 beds? That's, you know, as precise as we can get. And apparently the occupancy permit, which is necessary before we put any kids in the new facility, which isn't here, isn't going to have a specific number. It's just gonna say adequate facility. Okay, and that appears to be...
There's just a few items. We've submitted our plan for the meal transport. I kind of expected to hear back from Mr. McComber last week, but I know they're short-staffed too. So I, I think I'll probably hear back from him this week about that and then some parking issues and some other things. But, yeah, once those things are taken care of.
Thank you, and hopefully we'll be hearing some more about you. It may be academic whether we have 52 in there or we have occupa, uh, uh, operational capacity in there. You can't fit more kids than you can fit. And that's the whole purpose of the resolution, as I understand it. Thank you. Anything?
Time. Commissioner Rogers?
Madam Chair, I mean, Commissioner Boar, I, I, you know, 54, 55, I'm not there, but the real issue is the six months. The real issue is the six months, it's not the number. We, we basically agree on the number, I'm not gonna go, the six months is the deal because, to your point, Commissioner Garcia, I, I think you're wrong in saying that what we're doing are not tangible. This resolution was passed, this is enforcement of board law. This is, this is it. This is highly tangible, and this is highly enforceable. The question is, and you can't say aloud about it now, but I'm sure we're gonna talk about it in executive session today, the issue that we had before when we canceled probation's contract. We don't have a contract with probation right now. So basically, this is enforceable. Technically, they shouldn't be walking anybody up into this door that they don't have a contract for. We shouldn't be accepting any kids that are outside of Douglas County because they don't have a contract. It's tangible because when Lancaster County got out of their contract, and they did it, probation came and took all their kids out. So, the question really is, it's tangible because detention's not a placement, there is nothing that, that, they can, the courts can try to court us to do that, but how can they do that? Because they can't make Boys Town take somebody, they don't have a contract with us. There was, there was a time period, to my understanding, where we used to never have a contract with probation. And then we came under contract with them. I'm, I'm not privy to all of that, but the fact is, this contract is honored by the state. That's why they are, they were trying to get it. They're not, they don't have a contract right now, so technically, the number we were talking about, they should, they should be getting billed that number. And, and nobody should be able to walk up in there. Right now, Lancaster County sets with them a capacity because of that facility. And if you recall, kids were getting sent here from Lancaster County because they had a capacity issue. And like I mentioned before, kids are getting sent here from other counties because they have a capacity issue. This is full-throated enforceable, and that, that's my issue again. If we adhere to this, which we enforced, and it only, it does is reduce the probation kids really that are there, that need to be on the service, they got time to get their service up. To their credit, they're working to try to get the service up, but they, they're gonna have to, they're gonna have to speed it up to get there. And it's not like we're just talking about it. The number that was mentioned here for the 89 kids, we sat here in November and talked about that 89 kids. So this is not something new we've been talking about, this day's coming. And this is the unfortunate thing, that, you know, to comments people made, yeah, government's not perfect. But we need like Pearl Harbors around here to operate. When you have a Pearl Harbor, then people operate. The Pearl Harbor, that this contract being canceled, is Pearl Harbor. And it said that we gotta do something. I've been on several calls where they know, bear capacity just hadn't reduced with us, bear the capacity is reduced through the state. And they have to get the program, and so I'm going back to my point, that the six months is the issue. Don't let them off the hook to do this. We all here talking about money? We know we're strained for money. But, point blank, don't tell me you ain't got money when you had $2 billion in revenue. You got money. You can make it happen. Thank you.
Commissioner Garcia?
Yeah, just a question for, I guess, inquiry. If the May resolution is enforceable, the resolution essentially said we will take it down by five youth per month, I think specifically probation youth, is that correct?
It's a mix of probation and others, like for instance, the first month says they're at 30 kids, 18 pre-adjudicated and 31 on probation. So that, that, and then youth from other counties, five right now. I don't know what our youth from other county is, but that's the, that's the gradual, no, for the month of August, that's what it was then, when we passed it. For the month of August, they're supposed to be down to 30 adult, 18 pre-adjudicated, 24 probation, and then three out of state. Right now, today, if we're at 30, we're 73, we're two ahead of schedule.
As far as the enforceability piece of it, if a, if a youth is in detention, how do we forcefully take five out per month? Of course, there's ways that organically they'll be placed in other places, you know, if they find a placement, if probation finds a placement or other circumstances gets them to a different placement, you know, obviously that's a, a part of the, the process. But as far as forcefully taking five youth out per month, how does one forcefully do that?
Me? Yeah, Commissioner Garcia, I, I don't think, it's not forcible. It's, it's basically contractual, you don't have a contract. So basically, when we're negotiating this contract, the board has passed by resolution what it expects those numbers to be, and that's to be honored. So, all of that, they need to honor in that respect. So it is enforceable, right now they don't have a contract and contractually to agree to what they need to, they need to meet this standard. And when we passed it, note on the day, it was the cancellation of the contract and then this resolution to go with it.
Okay, I appreciate your insight. I do, at least from my perspective, see a little tension between, tension between, you know, that's supposed to be honored and the reality of the numbers in front of us and the situations in front of us where any given week, day, you know, probation and judges can send youth in our direction. And we're hoping that they're gonna honor sort of metrics and resolutions, but, you know, I do sense, I do see a, a tension there. Plus, I mean, like I've said in the past, I do want all contractors and partners and vendors to, to honor what it truly costs us to run any service, not just youth detention. So, I'm for that. But, big picture, I, I don't, you know, see the cancellation of the probation contract as a positive, you know. I ideally would want us to have, you know, positive working relationships with all stakeholders and partners in juvenile justice, including probation and others. And so, perhaps my approach would be a little different in future years in regards to trying to get to sort of metrics with youth and detention as opposed to cancellation of contracts and maybe forcefully trying to do things one way or another. You know, certainly my approach would be to, to build positive working relationships with these institutions and really try to hone in on how we can work towards these compromises together. I know it's easier said than done, I know it might sound idealistic to some, it might sound idealistic to some, but that's just my approach in regards to trying to work with our stakeholders and rebuild some of those relationships moving forward. And hopefully we are able to, to implement a new contract, long-term of probation, that will meet some of those compromises. Thank you.
Commissioner Rogers?
Let me say to you, Commissioner Garcia, I, I agree, there's, there's inherent tension built in it, there's inherent tension built into the, to the negotiation piece. And I do agree with you, big picture, that you want it to be positive. And, and I think there's been, there'll be positive relationships. I mean, this is not, over the years, where we've been doing this, this is not the first time that we've been in a, a issue with probation and we all been good. But the, the point too, I think we all agree with is that, I don't think any of us is gonna allow a standard to be set for another county and that same standard then come to us. So, what I, and, and, and I mean by that is, we can have positive relationships, but the fact is, is that, this is why I'm saying, you know, you gotta hold them accountable for this. Don't come here and say, and, and you don't question Lancasters when they set capacity, when Lancaster says something and you come and give us this question. If the second largest county in the state can hold you to something, you know, you're gonna be fair with me and hold us to the same thing. That's all we are saying. Hold us to the same standard. You can't come here all of a sudden and then say, and, and I don't know, this is, this is speculation, but, you know, that that standard doesn't apply. I'm, I'm not a legal scholar, but I'm hoping, I'm not a lawyer at all. I wish I could play one on TV. But I do know that there's gotta be something saved for a standard that you already set. And you're not gonna do it on, on the same group. So, I think that's where, I think we gotta, we gotta be there with this degree. And the other piece without getting into specifics, but we all know that, when we say the positive tension piece, we all know what the number was presented to us before, when we were, when we made this decision and there weren't resources on the table. Then all of a sudden, there's new resources on the table. Detention is just an inherent piece of the negotiation. And the fact is, you did something for another county, you're gonna, you're gonna do the same for me. Thank you.
Commissioner, yeah, Commissioner Morgan?
First, I, I do have highest degree of respect, Chris Rogers, for your knowledge and work in, in the community. And this is only my opinion. I, and I hate to go back and say it, but I did wanna add a floor four years ago, and I know we did the footings, but, and not finish the floor because of our growth, not expecting to see what we've seen in the increase in crime in our youth than all ages. My concern is, and this is only me, I don't see that we're ever gonna be able to close the facility. And Brad is here, and he and I haven't had this discussion, but he can share comment because he's worked there all of the last, I don't know, 20 years. And my feeling is, if we don't keep it open, we're going, and I think we can financially continue to take people from Scottsville County, Washington County, and SARPEE and at least be a revenue source. Let's say we didn't keep it open and we just said, hey, we're gonna handle it with our new facility. With the growth of this community, I don't see any way it's gonna be possible to really have enough room for those that should be incarcerated and kept in a facility that's secure. And that's my belief with the growth and what's taken place, that that's not gonna happen. that's my belief with the growth and what's taken place, that that's not gonna happen. And therefore, I fear closing that facility and where they will go is to another state or somewhere, uh, maybe in our state, but they could be going like what Potawatomi County does and what others have done. So, you know, I don't know if we have this resolution, but I think at some point, we're gonna be operating the two facilities. I do think we can say that there's enough staff at our present facility if we open the other one. I'm not sure that's true, and I'm certain we need more deputies if we're operating both of them. Uh, but somehow, I'd like to see us get to a resolution to pass today, if there's one. And I do think, you know, I know that Terry Carpenter taught me the art of politics is compromise. If it's four consistent months or some other way, so we're all together. And I know we're all trying and concerned about this issue. But I still think that facility we have is gonna continue to be operated and used. And if somebody questions that, I'd like to hear say, no, we'll eventually won't need it. I don't think so. And I am still, the big priority to me is still the public safety. And if we try to push that envelope, I fear for what may happen and what we'll be listening to right at these board meetings of the situation, uh, there. So that's where I am on this issue, and it's a tough one. It isn't something you wanna do. And, uh, but I think that's where we are. Hope we can come up with something.
Is that all, Commissioner? Are you done?
Yes.
Thank you.
Uh-huh. And I would just add that again, um, holding off until we have a chance to continue to work on the May twenty-third resolution, the steps that we've put in place. As Commissioner Rogers stated, um, you know, we're just not sitting here. We're actually going out looking at solutions. We're not saying they're, uh, the end-all, be-all, or that everybody has approved them yet. But we're not just sitting here saying the only way to fix this is to open, keep the old one open and not open the new one. What we're saying is, we're going to other, uh, communities and talking to them. We've also, as we've stated many times at this board meeting, that there's ongoing discussions with the state to see if there is a way that, there's a partnership there for them to come in and utilize the facility for some of these kids that need that longer-term placement. So again, it's not like nothing is being done. Um, we are continuing to, to work it. So all's, again, I would ask is that we honor the May twenty-third. It, in essence, is giving us some more time, not setting a time where we're gonna just, you know, not open the new one. But let's reevaluate in November. Heck, we can evaluate every month if you want to. But give us the, the, the May twenty-third, give us that timeframe to continue to work what we're working on, um, to be able to, to reach that goal. And I think that we can reach that goal because some folks, I think, really, really need to understand, is that our detention center is not a placement. The detention center is to hold kids until that placement is determined. So a kid with a gun, and it just happened here of recent, sat there for sixty-nine days and then was released to home. But again, is there a better way? Are there better ways for us to be able to do this? And that's what we work on. Um, Commissioner Rogers, more than me, he goes to those meetings, um, weekly, but yet he's on the phone and other meetings, I would say daily, on this. Um, trying to find those solutions and those community partners to, um, to come up with those solutions for our kids. Um, so just detaining them, in my opinion, isn't the answer. Um, but just releasing them isn't either. So again, that's what we're working on. And that May twenty-third resolution does exactly what Commissioner Morgan is saying he wants, and that is giving us time to work those. In a couple of weeks, I could have a number of community providers that could come up here and talk about the successes of the children that they've helped through those community-based services. Um, and maybe I will. Because right now, as we're hearing about, and God, it's horrible, and it breaks my heart. But we're also having successes with turning kids' lives around. And that we cannot lose. We cannot lose that focus. And again, just give us the time, as the resolution in May gave us, to continue our work as a board, as a community, to get this right.
Commissioner Kavanaugh?
Just for clarification, this May twenty-fifth resolution has absolutely no legal force or effect on the people who put children in detention. Has no effect on the public safety people who we heard from here today. Uh, has no effect on the county attorney who we heard from here today. Has no effect on the judges. Uh, has no effect on probation. So, you know, we all hope that the number of children in detention will come down. But thinking that a resolution passed by a board of commissioners has any legal effect, any real effect, on any of the people who actually put children in detention is a fantasy. So we might as well go ahead and do the responsible thing, which is put in effect the resolution that actually has some legal effect over things we can control.
With that, there are no other lights. Um, can you remind me where we're?
Well, I, so the overall resolution got a motion and a second, and they both agreed to strike that last paragraph. I guess where I'm not certain is regarding the fifty-four youth. I don't know if there was a motion or a second on that one.
There was a motion by Commissioner Boyle.
Okay.
But I don't think there was a second. And then there was... There, oh, you did? Okay.
Okay. Uh, uh, but it sounds to me, we're actually gonna, the first one, striking that last paragraph, it sounds like that's just a friendly amendment. But this one's gonna actually be voted on, right? The one that, okay. And then, just to clarify, so we know we're talking about fourth whereas, uh, after the final paragraph, I guess, or, or comma, until the amount of detained youth matches the operational capacity, i.e. fifty-four youth, strike that of the Youth and Family Support Center, and said figure, strike said figure and insert the operational capacity is maintained for a minimum of six consecutive months. Does that sound good?
Well, yes and no, because Commissioner Garcia brought up that there's other places in this resolution that that needs to be fixed.
Uh, I...
And we're gonna lose our...
I think that's, I think, I looked at the resolution. Um, there's maybe a, a reference in, in one of the, be it four resolved about said figure, but I, I don't think that's concerning. I think the way you have it now should be sufficient as an amendment. I don't think there really needs to be any other changes to effectuate what you wanna do.
Can I?
Commissioner Rogers?
I'd make a, an additional amendment. You can run two amendments to remove the six-month period. That's the issue.
Okay, I'll second that.
So which one am I taking first?
Six months would be first.
All right, this is taking forever. So let me just do, can we do a voice vote on the fifty...
On the six.
On the six-month, uh, striking that from the...
Resolution.
Okay. Commissioner Boyle?
Yes.
Commissioner Kavanaugh?
No.
Commissioner Friend?
No.
Commissioner Garcia? Commissioner Morgan? Commissioner Rogers?
Yes.
Madam Chair?
Yes.
Motion, motion fails, uh, three to four. Uh, Commissioners Boyle, Commissioner, excuse me, Commissioners Kavanaugh, Garcia, Morgan, and Friend voting no. All others voting yes. Okay. Uh, on the amendment regarding the adjustment to the fifty-four youth in the resolution. Um, I'll do a voice vote on that as well. Commissioner Boyle? I apologize, it's to strike it and adjust, adjust the other references to it, to just say, uh, correct, but to just, where it's said figure is referenced, is to say operational capacity.
Yes.
Okay, so Commissioner Boyle voting yes. Commissioner Kavanaugh?
Yes.
Commissioner Friend?
Yes.
Commissioner Garcia?
No.
Commissioner Morgan?
Yes.
Commissioner Rogers?
Yes.
Madam Chair?
Yes.
Motion passes six to one. Commissioner Garcia voting no. All other Commissioners voting yes. Okay. Uh, Madam Chair, when you're ready, I'll start the machine vote on the full item.
We're ready.
All right. Motion passes five to two. Commissioner Rogers and Borgeson voting no. All other Commissioners voting yes.
All right, uh, quickly, the next committee is our Human Resources. We have a weekly personnel report as presented. There are no legislative items at this time. We do have need for an executive session for...
It would be contract negotiations and real property negotiations, unless you have something else, Teresa.
All right. So is there a motion to go into executive session for those reasons stated? All right. Motion by Commissioner Morgan, seconded by Commissioner Rogers. Please vote.
Commissioner Rogers, Kavanaugh, and Garcia. Commissioner Kavanaugh, are you voting yes?
Yes.